Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting a December 7th to order and ask us to stand for a moment of reflection for the spiritual strength to get through the day and to remember Pearl Harbor and the people who passed away that day. Supervisor Michaels, would you please lead us in the place, please?
Please join me in the place, stand up my class. I call the vision issued by the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation and one God, and the people who have ever taken justice for all.
The minutes of November 23rd have been moved in second. Is there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries for an agenda review. This is an opportunity for us to consider changes to the agenda. Do we have any suggested changes to the agenda? Okay, alright. Yeah, or an agenda review.
Is this the time and place? I'm sure it's the place. Is it the time for a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors of County Ventura County Watershed Protection District?
Yes.
You may raise the issue of the meeting now, yes.
Here in this building?
Well, the meeting won't be here in this building, but you may raise the issue of tonight's meeting.
I'm just joking. What is the...can you give us some dates, Liberta?
Am I checking with the city of Fillmore? The first available date would be Tuesday evening, February the 1st, and they're also available on Tuesday evening, February the 8th.
Okay. I would hope that we could move it to February 1st. That's my motion. Okay.
Supervisor Flynn, if I might.
Supervisor Michaels?
Since I don't have my calendar with me and etc., would it be permissible and possible to just continue the meeting to a future date to be announced and give us a chance to decide which of the dates are gonna work?
Yeah, that's a good idea. I withdraw the motion. That's my motion.
Then I'll second it.
I don't think...is it continue or can we simply...
Actually, what you should do is cancel the special meeting and then add a future date reschedule of the special meeting.
Okay, alright.
I withdraw my second. Withdraw your motion. They can do it.
Alright, okay. The county council just made my motion. I adopt every word he said.
And I'll second that.
Okay, good. Alright, so we'll cancel the meeting. The motion is to cancel the meeting for this evening and to have us work with city of Fillmore and potentially check calendars to reschedule before something comes back onto our agenda. That's the motion and the second. Is there any objections? Seeing none, the motion carries other agenda review items. Mr. Johnson?
I have three notes here. One says that item, agenda item number 17 has a revised letter, and I'm not entirely clear on this because it says all supervis...the letter should read, "All supervisory districts zones 1 through 4."
Well, that's watershed connections.
Yeah, right. I was gonna say that if it were all supervisory districts, it would have to be 1 through 5, so I think that that's an error. Okay, and a regular agenda item number 33, there's a revised page 3 to the board letter, and consent item number 15 is a request to have that one removed from the agenda.
Alright, so we're gonna pull 15, a revision to 17, and 33.
That's correct.
Great. Supervisor Michaels?
No, Supervisor Law.
I mean Supervisor Law.
Well, I wasn't going to pull this from the consent, but I would like to do so since there's been some work done on it once I find which one it is. It's regarding the...I have my notes and I put them aside and need to pull them back out. Regarding the Todd Road jail and the request regarding the upgrades of the wastewater sewer facility...here it is, right here. Wastewater treatment plant facility. I'd like to pull that from consent just to have a little conversation on it.
Which item?
Oh.
Number...
It is 13.
Alright, let's pull for comments.
Right. Sorry.
Alright, we'll do that right after board comments. Supervisor Ray Law again.
There's another one. On the correspondence agenda, correspondent item number 1. I had asked yesterday if we might have staff available just to talk a little bit about it. It was in the paper today, and perhaps if we could pull that and just have some staff comment on it.
While we do this, whoever the appropriate staff is is gonna comment on that. Why don't you let us know when you show up so that we can...just get our attention when you show up here so that we can get reported on.
It should either be Dr. Levin or Paul Lorenz. I've had conversations with him.
Okay, good. Alrighty. Anything else? Supervisor Parks?
Yes, I'd like to request that item on TV pulled for just for a discussion question I have.
So 13 and 19. If we keep it up, we can make sure we've touched every item on the agenda here. Anything else? Alright. Okay, we have finished the agenda review. We're ready for motion on the consent calendar minus items 13, 15, and 19, not on the consent calendar.
Move approval as amended? Second.
Moving second. Is there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. We're at public comment times, and we now have Mr. Dwight Moore here for public comments.
Board of Supervisors, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. The item of most concern to me and to the residents of this county is whether or not Supervisor John Flynn's recommendation that a review of the watershed protections districts issues, agreements, and approvals as they relate to the Heritage Valley Park project in Fillmore should be undertaken. This item now effectively has been continued four times, and with the date uncertain for its resurrection, let's say, it becomes increasingly apparent that perhaps we will never look into or study the watershed protection district's actions with regard to Heritage Valley Parks. Your review should include other actions. Inter County flood controls approval of the building of a levee out into the floodway of the Santa Clara River for the Riverwalk subdivision in Fillmore, and the subsequent submission to the FEMA, joint submission with the city of Fillmore, the FEMA that indicated implied that the levee hadn't already been built.
Could you repeat it?
I could repeat that, yeah. And I've mentioned it before this body, to this body, to the Board of Supervisors, that flood control approved the building of a levee into the floodway of the Santa Clara River, not only without FEMA approval, but without your knowledge or any public hearings. I'm concerned about the direction that Jeff Pratt is taking the watershed protection district. It may very well be that he believes he is obligated to respond to the individual wishes of each of the Ventura County supervisors. After all, his continued presence as the director of the Ventura County Watershed Protection District depends upon your support. With regard to the Heritage Valley Parks project in Fillmore, he confided in me early on, since denied, that the word in the highest political circles was that this development would be approved no matter what. Recently Jeff Pratt told me, and he checked to make sure I was quoting him exactly, that we are not here to prevent development. What is his job? Is it to carry out the wishes of each supervisor or is it to protect the interests of everyone who is subject to potential flood damage? Everyone should include those on the opposite bank and downstream, as well as those who will purchase homes and send their children to the school in the very development that it is not his job to oppose. It is hard to imagine a more misguided development. That it is cited near Fillmore should have been an early warning to Jeff Pratt. The city of Fillmore has a history of approving development where it shouldn't be. Eldorado Senior Mobile Home Estates was annexed and then zoned by Fillmore while floodwaters from the January 25th, 1969 floods still flowed over the property. The leapfrog development Los Arenos was also flooded in 1969 and with even more devastating consequences in 1978. So what was Fillmore County flood...what was Ventura County flood control's response when apprised of a 750 home development proposed for the Santa Clara River floodplain at Fillmore? A development that is bisected by Polk Creek and also encroaches hundreds of feet into the floodway of the Santa Clara River. Ventura County flood control sent a typical boilerplate letter, which is sent in response to most requests for comments on an EIR. Prodded to do more, Sergio Vargas, a division engineer of Ventura County Flood Control, wrote a very credible comment on the Heritage Valley Parks EIR and timely submitted it, only to have Jeff Pratt, after arriving at an agreement with the developer Griffin Industries, belatedly, after the deadline for comment, sent to Fillmore revisions that watered down the concerns of his own expert.
You have 10 seconds, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. This has established the process that Jeff Pratt has followed throughout in his efforts to facilitate this misguided development. Experts his own and once hired by the district have been ignored, and the developers and the city of Fillmore's interests have been paramount. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Moore. That is the only public comment card that I have. We now are ready for...well, Mr. Johnson wants to make a comment.
Just one clarification the auditor controller brought to my attention. Under your agenda review, on the agenda it read items 9 through 20. It actually should have read 9 through 21. I don't know if the action taken included all the items or whether we need another motion to cover item 21. Mr. Claywell?
I don't believe you do, as long as the...as item number 6 is corrected to reflect that it's 9 through 21. I don't believe you need another motion.
Okay, alright. Okay, we are now ready for board comments. I believe we sweep from the left this time. Supervisor Michaels?
You picked on the wrong person from that movement. No, I have no comments other than an observation of Pearl Harbor Day. I think it's important that we all remember and reflect in whatever way on what happened, what that meant to the history of this great nation and all of the citizens and particularly the men and women in uniform and their families who were lost on the great day of infamy. We seem to be letting that slip from our minds, much like September 11th, and I hope that as Americans we take some time today to stop and think about the true meaning of September 11th and most importantly, a longer time ago, December 7th.
Supervisor Law?
Yes, thank you. I heard this morning-
I heard this morning there'll be a ceremony out front at the Memorial Center from the veterans that they'll be conducting on behalf of today's date. I will submit a list for adjournment, but there's one special friend I'd like to call out, Arlene Goldberg. She... I became acquainted with Arlene through the Ventura County Professional Women's Network. She was a twenty-year member and was a gifted journalist and a publicist, and she gave much of her generously over time and talent and treasures to a lot of organizations throughout our county. So I'd like to submit that and then some additional names to adjourn in memory. Thank you.
Supervisor Clay.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to pass the board to adjourn in memory of the people I have on this list. And, let's see. We had a person who works for the county, Leroy Smith, works in County Council's office, and his daughter, Caitlin Smith, won a silver medal and was presented to her from Congressman Elton Gallagher. And I... It's presented... The recipients must set certain goals of voluntary public service, personal development, physical fitness, and explore and have a real meaning in the area where the person lives. And Caitlin Smith won this award. So I'd like to congratulate her and her parents for doing such a fine job in raising her, and then her taking advantage of all that instruction that her parents gave her and environment around her, and we're very proud to see that she won this award and proud of her parents. The other issue is... This wasn't an issue, this is complimentary. Today at eleven AM, the Veterans of Pearl Harbor will have a memorial service at the County Veterans Memorial. I'm a co-sponsor too, so I'll be leaving, but everyone is invited to come to it and listen and see and honor those people who were at Pearl Harbor on December seventh, nineteen forty-one. The other issue is the one we talked about on issue five B. It's my understanding in hearing the motion and listening to the County Council and to Judy Supervisor Michaels, that we're going to have the hearing. It's a matter of clearing our calendars, so we can select a date. Is that correct? So Dwight, we will have the hearing. We need simply to set the date.
Supervisor Park.
Since we're talking about some great people in our district, I also had the fortune to go to a Girl Scout Gold Award for a young lady named Lisa Ashley Cox, who painted a most beautiful horse mural at the Ride On Facility, which is a place where disabled children get an opportunity to enjoy horses. And it was just such a wonderful event, and she did such a beautiful mural. I hope the papers cover it, because it is a real addition to our community. I'd also like to, you know, note Pearl Harbor Day, as well as, I think today's the first day of Hanukkah, so I'd like to wish people a happy Hanukkah, too. And then I also had someone come up to me over the weekend to tell me how delighted he was that he was able to pay his property tax over the Internet, and it cost him a dollar fifty. So I wanted to announce that for those of you who might want to take up that opportunity. It's a nice one to have. And I will also ask that we close in honor of the people on this list. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A few things I'd like to comment on. One, this past week, the City of Ventura has been trying to relocate homeless people that are living in the river bottom and requested the assistance of many county staff departments to help. Carol Shookin stayed at the Army for a long time registering people and dogs, and we had really professional help on the part of county staff and great collaboration between the county staff and the City of Ventura. I've received many compliments from the City of Ventura staff about the professional behavior of our county staff with regard to this, and I think it's a compliment and a good sign of us trying to have good professional relations with the City of Ventura on this effort, and I hope that it carries over to other efforts. Also, on today's agenda, Mr. Lorenz is back there, and so we'll call him up here in just a minute, but we have a letter from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and it notifies us that Ventura County's been selected as a location for a national children's study. And they're going to study a hundred thousand children in the country, and they're going to cover them from the time they're born till they're age twenty-one, so to better understand all the connections between the environment in which children are raised and their physical and mental health and development. So this is a long-term study, and it's been a very, I think, very important valuable study, and may pinpoint the causes and find prevention and treatment strategies for all kinds of childhood diseases and disorders. And I think it's very interesting that Ventura County has been selected, and that letter was sent to my office as a Chair of the Board. We forwarded on to Paul Lorenz and Public Health Department. They will participate in an upcoming teleconference about this, but what I'm dying to find out is why Ventura County was selected, if you know. So we'll go ahead and call you up right now and see if you can fill us in any more on this, Mr. Lorenz.
Mr. Chairman.
It is.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could you please call the agenda item for that, so we are official on that?
Thank you, yeah. It is our information agenda, which is our last item, which is item thirty-seven. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair members of the Board. Mr. Johnston, this truly is a unique opportunity. It's a wonderful opportunity for Ventura County for a number of reasons, and some of them stated by the Supervisor, the Chair. First of all, it was done on a random basis. It was a balance between rural metropolitan areas throughout the United States, so we were very fortunate to be selected. We, as a county, are committed to see that our community is involved to the extent possible. The one good thing about the study is that we don't expect there to be much resources that we have to contribute, other than cooperation amongst our various agencies and organizations. So we look forward to this opportunity, and we will keep your Board informed, as well as other organizations that would benefit from the study.
Supervisor Long.
Just a quick question. So randomly selected, it wasn't because they saw the good work we do here, the reports we generate, and the health of our children?
I heard it was the quality of the supervisors.
Oh, gosh. And their commitment and dedication.
There are probably a number of reasons that I'd love to state for our selection here. Unfortunately, as I understand it from the study experts, it was on a random basis.
Oh, that's interesting.
Based on our population, our demographics, and so forth, we were selected. So we do have wonderful demographics and a good population to speak for.
Then we truly are lucky.
Supervisor Park.
I would think it takes the willingness of parents to participate, and I actually had my oldest daughter in a study that UCLA did from birth, and they'd come out to our house every year or so and interview her and interview me, and I think the information was very valuable, but that wasn't necessarily physical health. It was more looking at whether they excelled at college and, you know, what the two-parent household versus one-parent household, but all that kind of information is, I think, really helpful for the future.
Absolutely, and that is the key, is to, for us, help the study experts gather the participants and willing participants, if you will, because it is a longitudinal study. It's twenty-one years of commitment.
Okay. Supervisor Long.
If I might, since we're talking about children's health, give a plug for tomorrow morning, a conference at eight o'clock in the morning from eight to ten at the Orchid Building in Camarillo. And it's part of the work that's a collaboration of a lot of folks who deliver health care in our county, including our County Health Department and Children's Health Initiative Forum. Another aspect of children's health care needs, so trades connected.
Okay. And we're now done with... Well, let's go ahead and finish item thirty-seven. That's motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. Any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. I'd like to go back to board comments, because I still have some board comments. Might point out Supervisor Long and myself attended a preschool for all information breakfast the other morning, and that will be an effort that will hopefully gather steam in the state of California. I also would like to ask the Board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list with particular attention called out to Bert Dahl. He was the first mayor of Fort Rainie. And also Rick Scott, and in the City of Ventura, there was certainly a very large turnout for services for him here, but Rick was a longtime football coach at Buena High School. Most recently, he was coaching at Rio Mesa High School as the offensive coordinator. Rio Mesa High School suffered two difficult losses here recently, people that lived in Ventura but worked at Rio Mesa High School. He was certainly a very devoted teacher, coach, spent a lot of time mentoring young people, and to see two quality gentlemen who had such a strong commitment to young people and the education of young people has been a difficult loss for people in Ventura and people at Rio Mesa High School. So I ask the Board to adjourn in memory of the people on these lists. Thank you. And with that, we are done with our board comments, and we're ready to move on to our regular agenda items, which we go to item thirteen, which was pulled for comment.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The consent item, this is on the Todd Road Jail wastewater treatment plant, and the item is to reject the bid that was well over what we really wanted to pay, but my questions, and I've staff's been working with Mr. Pacala to try and understand, what we have is a relatively new jail. Why do we need to have these improvements? And when it goes out to bid, the challenges of trying to contain and control our costs, so.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Johnston, Reggie Pacala, Water and Sanitation Department, Public Works Agency. As Supervisor Long indicated, the recommendation is to reject only one bid that we received. The question that's raised is why is that we have to improve recently, eight years ago, wastewater treatment plant that was constructed eight years ago. As you are aware, the treatment plant operates under an existing water quality control board permit, and we have a flow restriction, average daily flow, and also water quality requirements. What we have found out is due to commercial laundry and vacuum toilets, and also the number of inmates at the jail, the load that's coming to the treatment plant has increased. Compared to the design capacity, our load is almost fifty percent high in our total suspended solids. When we looked at the options, we are recommending converting one of the surge basin into an equalization pond that will equalize the flow, and if your pro recommendation, we'll be going out to bid again, and we expect to complete the project in about one year's time. And this project has been coordinated with Sheriff's Department and GSA, and it has been budgeted in GSA's budget.
And the numbers of inmates and staff at the facility, that seems to be larger than projected?
According to our records, in the month of November, we have eight hundred and fifty inmates and one hundred and ninety staff. As I said earlier, this was designed for the build-out capacity of eight hundred inmates.
Okay. Thank you. We ready for a motion on item thirteen?
Just one more question, if I might.
Yeah.
What was the difficulty in the bid process? Why just what? Is this such a specialized field?
We had more than twenty people purchase the bid documents. However, when we called the contractors who purchased the bid documents, asked why they did not bid on the job, some of the responses were that they were busy and they thought there would be enough competition, so they didn't bid on the job. When we asked whether they would be interested in bidding the job if it was rebid, and we were told that they wouldn't be interested in bidding on the job.
Okay. Okay. The fear of competition runs rampant, huh?
So I move the recommended action to reject this bid, and appreciate staff's information work on this.
Second. And I might point out, as we're getting ready to vote on this, that this is not... This is happening all around the country with bids, with China sucking up so much of the concrete and rebar and all of that for their rapid development there, and then with quite a bit of building going on here in the United States also. Companies are... Companies have lots of opportunities here. I suspect it won't be too much longer before we'll find companies hungry as interest rates go up, and so we may find bids come back down. Supervisor Park.
I just say, obviously, timing is everything, and I just really appreciate the fact that instead of going over budget, you know, a third more, that we can wait, and we have that ability to do that, and I appreciate staff's recommendation that we don't do that, and we wait until we have the ability to get some competition. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. We have any objections? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item nineteen. Supervisor Park.
Hi, this item is just the hazardous material discharge report, and I note that it talks about platform gale, that it had a release of hydrogen sulfide, and it says in the report forty pounds of oil. But both the Los Angeles Times and the Star reported, not oil, but concentrations of flammable natural gas. So I was wondering if we can get that looked at to see if we're reporting flammable natural gas as oil, or indeed it was oil and not flammable natural gas. So is it possible that we can continue this to the next meeting and get that answered?
Anybody from RMA here?
I would move that we continue this to the next meeting and find out whether it was natural, flammable natural gas, or if it was oil. I think of it as two different things.
Okay. We have motion to continue. Any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. All right. That finishes our consent items that we have. We are now ready to move to our non-time certain items. Our first one is item twenty-seven, Harbor Harbor. Ms. Krieger.
Good morning, members of the Board. I am here this morning accompanied by Brian Dunn, who's representing Vintage Marina. I think you probably all got the email yesterday. We set this date for today so that Mr. GMR could be here, because he badly wanted to be here, unfortunately. His wife, just this weekend, is in critical care at Cedar Sinai, and so he is obviously unable to attend, but he did send his apologies to all of you, because he very much not only wanted to contact you, but to be here. Big difference. We were here just about one year ago for the awarding of this lease by the Board of Supervisors, and it has been a much quieter year on this lease hold for all of you. The lessy has been working diligently. They're still concentrating on a high-quality new marina, on a high level of service to tenants. One of the nice additions we've had that was beyond what I expected from Vintage Marina is cooperation with other lessys. They've actually taken the initiative to call together other lessys to start working on some cooperative ventures, and they've also provided some new events. All of that aside, we're in front of you this morning with really three items. The first is to resurvey and fix the property descriptions as attached to the lease. The second is probably the most substantive, is to enlarge the lease hold by about twenty feet to add some additional slips. And the third item is an oversight on our part, and that has to do with the alcohol-related provisions. We generally put a... We have in our boilerplate lease a standing, no service of alcohol. The lessy is not permitted to go and get an alcohol license without an amendment to the lease in the county's consent. I don't know what I was thinking with the yacht club on the parcel. I'm not removing that particular, but we need to fix that now. Yes, we want them to be... But it was... Nobody, none of us noticed it last year. In terms of the items, you have diagrams in your packet. I do have overheads here if we need them. What we're doing, as each lease is either extended or reissued, is going back and having the lessy themselves repay to have the survey done to check... the LSE themselves repay to have the survey done to check the legal description that we have attached to the lease against what is actually on the lease hold. And in almost every case, part of it has to do with more modern technology, part of it has to do that build-out didn't happen exactly the way it was planned, there are mismatches between the actual legal description and what's on the lease hold. And this is a good time for the next forty years to get that fixed. Well, in fact, that did happen in this case. The buildings, particularly as they are sighted on the land side, are slightly different than what the legal description is. And for purposes of insurance and liability and just clarity, we think it would be prudent to stop now and fix that. The LSE is willing to pay to have the survey confirmed, to have the legal description rewritten. It would then be our responsibility to go back and have that verified either by someone in-house or someone outside to make sure that it's correct. And then that legal description would replace the one that is currently on the lease. There are no changes, except for what we get to in the next item, there are no changes to the existing lease hold anticipated here. It's merely to match the building pads as described at the lease to the existing buildings that are there.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just briefly, so the action today would allow for the new survey and legal description once approved by you or reviewed by the Harbor Department or legal to just happen? You don't have to bring it back again?
We would prefer not to have to come back. Obviously, if the board would like to take that action itself, we're more than happy to do that.
Oh, no.
But between County Council and Public Works or a survey consultant and ourselves, we think we can check the description and then just attach it.
I fully agree, and it's expensive to bring it back. I was trying to get to the point that I felt that it should be stated clearly that it's not the intent for it to come back, because it doesn't read that clearly that it's a final, if we approve this today, then it's a mechanical thing that will be taken care of.
Yes, and that was my next item. Under the recommendations, it says that you would approve and authorize the director after concurrence of County Council and the chief executive officer to execute a lease amendment just replacing that lease hold description. So this would be the last time you see that item, that particular item, unless you have a wish to do otherwise.
And it has been called out publicly, but that will be the action?
Yes, if it's approved by the board. The second item has to do with, well, if you don't mind, I will go out of order, but the third item has to do with just removing the restriction against alcohol in the lease and limiting it to the operation of the yacht club, which does hold a license from ABC and a special use permit from the city of Oxnard. We would just recognize the yacht club's provision of alcohol service, and that's the end of that. The final item is the most important, and that is the enlargement of the lease hold. And you'll see here that the recommendations include the expansion of the parcel, and that is also would not return to this board because it's a straightforward twenty-foot addition. This has been a very interesting process for me, watching the replanning with the many consultants that Vintage Marina has of the replacement of this marina. I knew from past experience that when you replace a dock and make it handicapped accessible, you do lose slips because of the length of the gangway that's required, the hinging of the gangway, all the things that you have to do to make that work. What wasn't as clear to me is that if you follow new boating and waterways standards, the changes in the width of individual docks, particularly the width of what's called the fairways, which is the water space in between docks, which nearly doubles, costs an extreme number of slips. Now, we have narrower fairways now and have never had an accident. We have people who've been there more than twenty years and have never had an accident. And so we considered coming back to the board and waiving those state boating and waterways requirements for wider fairways. However, bankers and insurance companies aren't all that flexible, and they, if there are state standards for building and construction, they like them to be followed. So our LSE is really tied to those requirements.
Supervisor Parks, yeah. On the issue you were just talking about, could it not be possible for certain slips to be ADA slips rather than all?
Well, what you have to do, what the guidelines call for in the state of California, is that you have to have, it's very difficult to design, because if you have twenty-foot slips, thirty-foot slips, forty-foot slips, and fifty-foot slips, you have to have at least one of each of those available to a handicap person. So that, and you're unlikely to design a dock with a twenty, a forty, a fifty, because you're using up a lot of water space. So what you end up with is several accessible docks. You have to have, if you have a size, you have to have an accessible slip in that size. So it really means the bulk of the marina becomes accessible by the time you're finished. I can't even tell you, Brian might be able to answer for you, how many iterations of the slip plan they went through. I know I saw six or seven myself, and I know there were a lot that they rejected before it ever got to where they talked to us.
May I ask, just in relationship to that question, isn't it possible that a larger slip could have a smaller boat in it so that
Yes.
That can help cover your ADA requirement without having to do all the, you know, one for a small boat, one for a slightly bigger boat, and all the way down the line?
Yes, that is possible. If you make a commitment that you will keep that, you know, first come, first served, if someone handicap comes in with a twenty-foot boat, you'll make a fifty-foot slip available. And I should caution you that what you're seeing in front of you today is a preliminary design. It's really the California Coastal Commission that will, in the end, tell them what can be built. Well, combination of California Coastal Commission, the bankers, and the insurance people, and I'm not sure which of those is more difficult to deal with, they're all difficult.
So in the packet, we have some design plans that show boats by size. That's not a, that's just a preliminary suggestion, it's subject to the Coastal Commission?
Correct. And if there are major changes, particularly if they require changes to the lease, obviously those would come back to you, and we can keep you informed. But I know that these have been submitted for discussion to the Coastal Commission, and there are a number of questions that are already, as of last week, coming back. So I'm expecting, as there usually is on any construction in the coastal zone, there's going to be a lot of discussion about this. So I don't want you to think this is final. It definitely is not. But in any case, with or without the handicapped accessibility, the real hit here is on these very wide, open water spaces then that will generate no income and have no slips. What this LSE has done, and it has not been inexpensive through the consultants, is develop a plan that allows for more than four hundred slips, four hundred and five slips. If you remember from the proposals last year, we had some proposals with as few as three hundred and sixty slips in this space. So they have worked very hard to do this. About twenty-five of those slips, not counting what's at the end, what we call the end ties, but about twenty-five of those actual two-sided slips are in that twenty-foot space, about twenty-five additional slips are in that space that's added to twenty feet. And that is actually something that we came up with in discussion with them as an idea for increasing the number of slips that could be made available. Interestingly, we found, going back through the files on Channel Islands Marina, because we're still involved in the litigation there, that about forty years ago, after the lease had been left, a fifteen or twenty-foot extension was also done at that time to allow for a greater construction of slips. So it's, we're in that same process.
Supervisor Parks.
The, you said twenty, you say twenty-five additional slips by moving it out twenty feet?
Right.
Have you calculated how much more revenue that would bring to the lease LSE?
No, I have not.
Is it possible brings them a couple million dollars?
Per year?
Yeah.
No, because the entire lease hold generates under two million dollars per year. The entire lease hold generates about one point four million right now, so no, it's not possible that twenty slips, and that's five hundred slips. So it's very unlikely.
Right. Well, just from looking at the size of the boats that will be using the extra twenty feet, it looks like it's all the big boats, like ninety, ninety-eight foot boats, ninety-two foot boats, right there though, for the most part, you've got from A dock on to at least F dock.
Well, no, actually, those are the end ties, which I did not count. As I said, the end ties can be used for two small boats, three small boats, or one large boat. They've put one large boat in there for now, they're counting the most conservative number of slips.
So if you take the end ties plus the additional twenty or twenty-five, you said that you get
It's more like forty-something, yeah.
You get an additional forty slips.
Correct. But the slips that are added are not all in the large size. The slips that are added, as I look at the plans, are thirty-eight, forty-two, forty-four, they're all sizes.
I'd like to get that figure, because if you look at how much rent you get a month for those large boats, it looks like you can get up to maybe even nine hundred dollars a month for some of the larger ones. And if that's what you have at the end slips, and you calculate that along with the other twenty-five out to the, you're talking about potentially a couple million dollars. So if we can get that figure, it will help us in this.
Sure. Those end ties do exist today. At the end of the docks today, there are also very large boats tied up at the end of each dock from A through O. So that will not be any change.
Well, the reason I ask this is because I want to assure that the county is getting adequate revenue from the LSE. And if they're getting an extra million, we should get a portion of that or increase the cost of their lease. You know, this is a gimme. And at, and it doesn't benefit the county, it only benefits the LSE by bringing in more revenue.
We do get, we do get percentage of the lease, is that correct? Ms. Krieger?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, we receive, we receive a percentage of each one of these, so.
And that's not solely what we get as a result of the, the revenue they give us isn't just the percentage, isn't it right?
The revenue that we get is twenty-five percent of the gross income. Just working rough numbers here, if you assume there are twenty-five slips at about five hundred dollars a month, which would be generous, that's for a larger slip, it adds up to about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars per year in additional gross income to the LSE.
I would like to get that calculated.
And the county would get twenty-five percent of that.
But I think it runs closer to a thousand, but that needs to dollars per slip.
In my
In the event that someone lives on it.
And if, at a thousand dollars a slip, if there are forty slips trying to take the maximum, there'd be forty thousand dollars a month, which would be maybe at four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which the county would get twenty-five percent of. So somewhere, somewhere in between those figures probably. Other questions, Supervisor Parks? Okay. Supervisor Parks.
Yeah, I'm looking at the exhibit you have, I'm trying to find the name of this one, dock replacement layout for option E. And it's difficult to tell on some of these, not necessarily this one, but on D, for example, where the new pierhead line is and where the old one is. I've got E looking like this here. Do you have E?
Except the one you
Yeah, they're in E, but they're not in D.
Yes, they are, you said they're on the left-hand side, they're indicated on the left and the right.
Okay, Mike, I see what you mean, it's hard to read. But anyway, my question is, how many square feet of additional space, or square yards if you wish, of additional space is going to be taken from the waterways to fulfill the intent of the amendments?
Normally, we would do that in acres, and I believe it's a total of about two acres.
Two acres. I guess the, well, I'll tell you the reason I raise this question later. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have more presentation?
The only other thing that I wanted to say is that I wanted to note for both the board and the public that on page two of the letter to the board, on the second to the last paragraph, it does say that the department has reviewed this project in consultation with County Council, and it is exempt at this point under SEQA until it is a project that is outlined by the California Coastal Commission. It cannot be evaluated for impacts, and so at this stage, it is merely a lease amendment for purposes of renovation and not a new project.
You mentioned in your, in your board letter, with the twenty feet, the expansion will not significantly affect existing navigation patterns. How much confidence do we have in that? What evidence do we have of that? And what role will the Coast Guard play in that?
Yeah, we've already discussed this with the commander of the station next door to us, Aunt Brian Clampett, and he does not believe, we took him out in the boat and showed him exactly where this line would be drawn. He did not see any impediment to navigation there and didn't exhibit any concern at all. Before this happened, he would have to do a letter to that effect that clarified his opinion in the matter before Coastal Commission, or the Army Corps of Engineers would act. The US Army Corps of Engineers has also taken a look at this and doesn't have a concern with it. But that would also have to happen in writing before this entire process was completed.
And that's the evidence that we're basing our
Correct.
Our belief that it doesn't have a significant impact on navigation. Okay, do we have any other questions before we go to public comments? Supervisor Parks?
Yes, just in addition to the, and I can agree, you know, if the surveys are showing the math isn't right, that's something that needs to be corrected, and the issue of the alcohol permit, that needs to be corrected. The question, and if we're getting adequate revenue for the additional twenty feet, then I'm not as concerned that it's a gimme. So what is left with my concern is in relationship to the size of the boats. Presently, you know, before there were any changes, fifty-six percent of the boats were between twenty-eight and thirty-two feet. So that was the majority size slip we had out there, we have out there presently. And what was proposed to us by Vintage when we approved the lease, brought that down to about thirty-one percent.
Twenty-five percent is the lease requirement that was imposed by the board.
Yeah, that's what actually I pushed for, make sure, let's get, let's keep at least twenty-five percent, so that's cutting it in half. And that, that majority size, again, between twenty-eight and thirty-two, what's being proposed right now would be down to nine percent. And I realize what is making up for it are much smaller boats, the twenty-foot boats instead of the twenty-eight to thirty-two. So my request is to not lessen the size down to nine percent for that majority boat owner of the twenty-eight to thirty-two foot boats.
Well, if you'll excuse me for jumping in here, I do believe that this plan, and Mr. Dunn can get up and speak to this if you wish, does meet the twenty-five percent requirement.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I understand that.
Not nine percent.
But the point that I'm pointing out is that everybody, the majority of people, have a size boat that won't fit in twenty-foot slips. If the majority is twenty-eight to thirty-two foot, and that's fifty-six percent, we're going down to only now nine percent are going to be within that twenty-eight to thirty-two percent, thirty-two foot boat length. And that concerns me, because what it will do is everyone, and that's the majority who have twenty-eight to thirty-two, are going to have to go somewhere else, because we'll now only have nine percent in that size, or pay more money for a larger one.
I'm not following.
I'm not.
I'm not with you. You can go back and start over.
Okay, I'm sorry. Right now, right now, what presently exists is that the majority of slips are the size twenty-eight foot to thirty-two foot. Fifty-six percent of all slips in the marina are twenty-eight foot to thirty-two foot. That's what the majority of the boaters are now in, fifty-six percent. Originally, Vintage came back and said that, well, we'll knock that down to thirty-one percent. But what we have proposed today, if you look at the actual plans, which you said are just what we're submitting, it's down to nine percent. Nine percent now will be between the twenty-eight foot to thirty-two foot. And that leaves those fifty-six percent of the people having to go and find somewhere else dock, because they're not going to fit in the small slip size that we, of twenty-foot and twenty-two foot.
I'll ask Mr. Dunn to respond to that, and Ms. Krieger, just to make sure we understand this.
Good morning, members of the board. In the, in the existing plan
You have to get closer to Mike.
Sorry, in the existing plan, there are thirty percent, I mean fifty, twenty-five percent of the slips are thirty feet and under.
Mm-hmm.
You're using a
That's your proposal.
Fifty-six, that's in the proposal, in the, in the submittal to the
Mm-hmm.
Account. And so we've maintained the requirement of
I understand, absolutely.
The nine percent, you're using a range of twenty-eight to thirty-two feet.
Right, the most common out there. Right, the most common out there. Goes down to nine percent.
You're saying that in my existing marina, in the existing leasehold, there are fifty-six percent between twenty-eight and thirty-two feet.
Right.
Okay, I'll take you at your word at that. We were required by our lease to provide slips of thirty feet and under, twenty-five percent at the minimum. And we have done that. Now, in this expansion, every size in the expansion is, there's one of a thirty, every single dock gets a new size slip. The nineties, the end ties already exist, so they're just pushing out further into the water, so we don't count those as new slips.
Can you rearrange the plan so that you don't cut down the number of boats, slips that are from twenty-eight to thirty-two feet, that most popular size? Can you make revisions to the plan so that doesn't get cut down to nine percent?
We're adding the thirty-two foot size in there. Excuse me, I didn't think to interrupt.
No, absolutely. I don't mind at all, except that what we're ending up with is a fraction of ...
Nine percent.
That's right, that's right. And so my question is, can that be revised so instead of putting these little, someone called G of twenty-foot boats in exchange for the twenty-eight to thirty-two foot category, which is the most popular? Is there a way that you can rearrange it so that we don't severely cut back the majority of what's out there?
Well, first, yes, there is. We can move the slip design any ...
I think that's really important not to leave these people out.
It's very easy to move it a couple of feet this way and that way. And certainly, the Coastal Commission may have input into that as well and want that.
Supervisor Michaels. Yeah, you know, I respect Supervisor Parks's opinions. However, this, I believe, is much more of a policy discussion, and I don't think it ... I'm not clear enough that I'm going to support a request for a redesign. I don't know that the majority out there at this time, or what's projected into the future, is that number. I have no ... I have nothing in front of me that says I'm going to reject this plan based on those figures. Now, it might be a nice exercise, but until I have boaters that are saying they're being pushed out, or I have some definitive inventory of what's out there and what is currently and projected in the future to be the average size, I would say that most business people are going to try and accommodate what they project to be their business now and into the future. So while, you know, I respect Supervisor Parks's direction, if it is the right direction, I am not willing at this time to support any changes in the plans because, quite frankly, they'll have to go to the Coastal Commission. And I believe that the Coastal Commission is going to be much more forceful in trying to meet the needs of the boating community than even we would be. So that's just a position that I need to state now because should there be a motion for this, which it would have to be a motion, I'm not in support of changing anything on the fly like this. It seems if they were seven iterations, and I don't know how much control we have if they meet the lease, quite frankly.
Before we hear from ... Our county council wants to jump in here. I just want to point out, we have two public speakers. This could potentially be ten minutes of comments, and then for us, it sounds to me like we have more comment about this. Since we're at nine-thirty, I'm going to pull us out of this item and get our nine-thirties because we have quite a few people in the audience. We have a series of fairly quick nine-thirty items, but we really should get these nine-thirty items done. Mr. Claybaum, your comment for us to ponder during our break?
Mr. Chairman, I'm concerned about compliance with the Brown Act. The way the board is headed with this discussion concerns an illustrative plan that was presented. There was nothing on the agenda, nor is there anything in the recommendations about the board acting on these illustrative plans. And so I would think that if the board chooses to act at some point, that the plans be re-agendized for specific action rather than the board taking some action on those plans today.
Thank you for that sage advice.
Can I ask a question on that? I mean, we have in our packet approval of a lease amendment with designs and what the proposal is. We can't approve the lease with changes?
Well, what is recommended for action in your packet are specific amendments to the lease, and the amendments don't deal with the plans that are presented as illustrative.
So we might need to continue it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we will go to our first time-certain item, and I believe we do this a number of different ways, but if ... I think we'll ask our esteemed auditor Christine Cohen to come down so that everybody can see you front and center, if you don't mind. But what we have here is a certificate, and this is a award of financial reporting achievement to Christine Cohen, our auditor, and it's the highest form of recognition of government accounting and financial reporting. And I think its attainment certainly represents quite an accomplishment on behalf of our accounting department. So I'd like to come down and present you with this certificate and ask you to make any comments to us about this award that you think are pertinent.
Thank you. First, I'd like to take a moment to thank my staff, Mercy Greco, and before her, Barbara Lopez, who recently retired, and the financial reporting unit, as well as every division in my office that contribute to the county's annual financial report. They do a yeoman's job. The requirements in financial reporting are getting extremely complex, and the bar has been raised by the Government Finance Officers Association for receiving the certificates. I'm extremely proud of their work, and I needed to get that out there. And I think they're in the audience, my four chief deputies and my staff. So thank you very much to them, and thank you to the board for this recognition. And I'd love a photo op with the board members if I could.
If we could have the board members come down at the same time, we could point out that this has been a challenging year adjusting to the new payroll system, and they have dramatically discontinued to keep throwing more and more accounting standards at you. And it is very nice that we feel tremendous confidence in what's happening there in your department. So thank you for your professionalism. And would you like your staff down here also? So if the staff would come on down for the pictures also, please, right? Here you go. Come on. Move after. You want it here, we'll come right here. Look what shows up when I ... I'm not leaving the podium again if they're going to leave me that many things I have to assign. Look at that. Okay, our second nine-thirty item is Stephanie Mazzala here from the Muscular Dystrophy Association. Greats. And Representative of the Firefighters Union, we have many of them here, it looks like. And I would like to take just a moment, it's a very short resolution, to be able to read this and then invite both of you to make comments to the board. But this recognizes December fifth to eleventh as Muscular Dystrophy Association Firefighter Appreciation Week. Now, whereas the firefighters have been working with the Muscular Dystrophy Association in their fight against neuromuscular disease for fifty years, and in two thousand and four, U.S. firefighters are slated to raise twenty million dollars throughout the country in support of Muscular Dystrophy Association. And through their daily service to communities and their dedication to the Muscular Dystrophy Association, our local firefighters contribute greatly to the well-being of all citizens. And in honor of the effort of our local firefighters, the Muscular Dystrophy Association is sponsoring December fifth to eleventh as Firefighter Appreciation Week. And we certainly have great appreciation for our firefighters, and it's nice to know our Muscular Dystrophy Association feels the same way. We're going to come down and present this and invite you to make comments to us, both of you. Thank you.
As you know, my name is Stephanie Mazzala, and I live in Oxnard, and I have a little girl by the name of Courtney Mazzala that has a disease called spinal muscular atrophy. It's under the Muscular Dystrophy Association Diseases. And I'm here to thank all the firefighters in Ventura County for the monies that they raise for these children. A lot of things are not covered by the insurance company, like fixing wheelchairs and just some medical equipment, and the monies that the MDA received from the firefighters is used for kids like my daughter and adults as well. So I thank them very much from the bottom of my heart.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Ventura County firefighters, I just want to thank you for always supporting our causes. Over the years, we, on duty and off duty, were involved in the community, and this is a great example of that. And last year, we were able to raise over twenty-five thousand dollars here in the county for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. And it really is a privilege to be able to do this, both on duty and off duty. So on behalf of the firefighters, I really want to thank you for your support throughout the year for our charity efforts, and thanks for allowing us to do it. This year, we have two locations, one in Simi Valley at Sycamore and Cochrane, and one in Ohio at the Y. And it's going to be this Saturday from about nine to three o'clock. And so if you want to spread the word that those are our fill-the-boot locations for this year, and we just want to acknowledge the fact that the community of Ventura County, every time we've come to them, whether it's for the fill-the-boot or for the nine-eleven fundraising efforts that we did in two thousand and one, the citizens of this community have come forward and emptied their pocketbooks to help us out. So we just want to thank them for that. Firefighter Lopez, Captain Salas, and Engineer Onas.
Okay, we now have the opportunity to hear from our sheriff. Sheriff Brooks, if you will come down and give us your presentation on the revised website with the addition of the high-risk PC 290 registers. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mr. Johnson, good to see you. I haven't seen you in a while. I have a very short report to make this morning in response to a request from Supervisor Long with the support of members of the board that we take the Megan's Law information that's currently available to the public at various police facilities throughout the county and put it online so that they can have access to the database of registered sex offenders. We'll give you a couple of introductory comments, and this is the actual access page. We'll walk you through until we actually get to the point that we're looking at different offenders. I want to give you a little bit of background before we do that. California's Megan's Law breaks sexual offenders down into three categories. The first category is other, and other are those people that have committed sex crimes that are primarily misdemeanors, misdemeanor sexual battery, exhibitionism, pornography, statutory rape, those kinds of things that aren't as much of a threat to the public. Those cannot be disseminated either at a police facility or online. The second category are serious offenders, and serious offenders, in Ventura County, we have seven-hundred-and-eighty-five serious offenders. They have been convicted of assault with intent to commit rape, rape itself, lewd or lascivious conduct with a child, continuous sexual abuse of a child, child molestation, sexual penetration, kidnapping with intent to commit specified sex offenses, felony sexual battery, or felony enticement of a child for the purpose of prosecution. That group of seven-hundred-and-eighty-five is not currently available online, either through our department, I don't think, or any others at this point, but will be soon available through the Department of Justice link. We're anticipating as soon as the end of December to as late as the end of June, being able to provide information on all seven-hundred-and-eighty-five people through this website. The offenders that you'll see displayed on the website today are the high-risk offenders. Those are offenders who have committed a number of multiple violent crimes, including some that are on the category that I described before, and those crimes have to have been committed within five years of the time of release, not including the time they spend in prison. So we're talking about repeat serial offenders in the county of Ventura. We do have six people that qualify as high-risk offenders. One of them is currently incarcerated, so you'll find five on the screens. And if we could walk through, this is the access to the Megan's Law site. It's very easy to use, and this is a background on the legislation, the conditions. It talks about the categories, and then there's disclaimer and condition at the bottom that has to be approved by the person who's accessing to make sure that they're old enough to access it and meet the other criterias. And if you agree at the bottom, that brings you through to the access site. The first page will have all of the high-risk offenders that are here in the county, and if you could click onto one of those as an example of the information that's provided, it will give the most current photo, the name, the thousand block of the street and city that they live in, a physical description, and a description of their offenses. The main benefit for this for people in the community, and certainly when the expanded list is available to them, is it will remove the inconvenience of having to go to a police facility, sign forms, wait to access a computer. They'll have immediate access, they're much more likely to use it that way. If they're worried about the safety of their children in their neighborhood, or a sports team, or a park program, or any youth activity, they can check very quickly here and find out if anyone they're concerned about is listed on that site. Gives them a greater measure of comfort and security in their neighborhoods, allows them to take reasonable precautions to protect their children. As we entered into this process, we had to do a number of things. We had to wait for the Department of Justice to come down with guidelines, hoping the state attorney general would provide some. Short of that, we had to wait for county council to give us a local opinion on what we could release and how we could release it. We also had to work with other agencies, since most of the offenders are in cities, to make sure the information on the offenders was correct and we had the permission to display it. We also had to redo our website to make it a little more user-friendly and allow people access to the information without going through a cumbersome process. While in the process of doing that, Diane White from our staff who's up in the booth making this work right now, and we are online as you're seeing this, we started to come up with ideas to make the website more accessible to the public, reduce the number of times that they had to call us or come to a public counter for services, improve the flow of information both to them and back to us. Currently, we have not only the Megan's Law information, but we have the ability to put news and emergency information, especially in the case of natural disasters, online with updates. We're finding more and more people can access that way. Traditionally, they've relied on radio stations or other media outlets, even more quickly and accurately, they can go online and get information from our OAS Center. We have more extensive and convenient access to jail information, which is a large source of our public contacts. We also have current information for contacting not only the proper people in our department, but also other law enforcement agencies within the county, are all linked into our website. In the very recent, in the soon-coming future, we're going to have the ability of the public to communicate online with our staff. That will eliminate a lot of frustration in being caught up in phone links and bounced from office to office. They'll be able to contact people online, get a quick response. They'll have greater access to crime statistics, down to neighborhoods, down to their block if they need it. It'll be very helpful for people not only checking the safety of their community, but also for residential real estate reasons and investment and other things that people frequently ask about. We'll have the ability to look up more information about inmates housed in our jails. Every main jail has family members and friends that want to know what their bail is and when they're going to get out and when they can be visited. Most of those necessitate personal contact or a phone call at this point. All of that will be available online. We'll also have an expanded media center to access communication with the media and archives. archives of information that we previously put out for their benefit, and historical information on the department, its department strategies and history, things that people frequently want to know about. We do a lot of master's projects and school projects, and we get a surprising number of phone calls over those things. Those will be available online as well. So we appreciate your interest in this. We're online today. People can go online and take a look at some of the other features that we have on the website, as well as the Megan's Law information. Any questions?
Thank you, just one. So there are six individuals on the internet right now in Ventura County?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank the Sheriff and thank his entire team for the persistence and perseverance in working through this. When bringing the letter in in August of '02, it was behind tragic horrendous murder of Danielle Van Damme in San Diego and Samantha Runyon in Orange County. And working with the Sheriff over this time, we looked at how to do this to make it a public access and user-friendly, and we looked at the San Diego model and we pinned up model, and it was one expensive and timely in maintenance and all of those things. But the Sheriff and his team kept at it, and other things occurred, such as changes in the law, that now frankly allow the Attorney General and put it in his court where it should be, to do perhaps more of the statewide perspective maintenance of the listing and et cetera, so that we don't incur at the local level additional costs. And the end result, I think, is a very good access for the public, and it really was with Diana White's skills and talents that she pulled this together to make such an updated and good webpage and website for the entire operations of the Sheriff's Department, but specific for this public access information. So thank you so much. It really was very good work and persistence that paid off.
Overall, this is just where the public's going in terms of use of the internet, and certainly great work on your part getting that together. Supervisor Flynn?
Basically, I was going to say the same thing, that the department has really done an awesome job, you and everyone involved, in making information available in a way that the public is really truly beginning to understand and engage in. And, you know, it's one thing to sit here and say, well, on one hand, that's good because it reduces the number of phone calls, the time officers, actually sworn officers have to spend on phone calls and et cetera answering most frequently asked questions. So there's a savings there, and that's important. But the most important thing, I believe, is the interface with the public and the public's ability to get information that they need in a non-threatening, non-frustrating way. Oftentimes, you know, I've heard from the public that, well, they want to ask these questions, but they're not really comfortable calling the Sheriff's Department and talking to an officer, or wasting, you know, some of them say, well, I don't want to waste their time, I know they're busy, but, you know. So making that available to the public, I believe, makes for a much better public law enforcement interface and a relationship and an understanding that can grow, and less confrontation, unnecessary confrontation. You know, I've always said that I would prefer that we really only have to have confrontation with the bad guys, and that any other time and any other citizen that we deal with, that it can be in a spirit of cooperation and a sense of community, and sometimes that doesn't happen. A lot of it's just human nature. You know, you see an officer in a uniform and carrying a gun, and you respect him on one hand, and on the other hand, you know, it's like, oh, I'm an officer, I don't know if I just want to walk up to him and say something. And that feeling shouldn't be there, but realistically it is, and I think, you know, in a way will be. And so I applaud the efforts and all that the department has done. Obviously, there's always a sense of tension in this room when we're all here together, and I really don't want that to spill over into the day-to-day operations or the way that this board is perceived in its appreciation for all the good things and the right things that are done. So thank you.
I also just say this is a very user-friendly website, and I think that probably says the best compliment that people can get on and get that information, and it's a compliment to your department. I had a couple of questions. One, I really like the idea about getting breaking news, and I know when we were, for example, having the fires, a lot of people were actually going to the internet, looking at the fire department site, trying to find out, you know, what roads are closed. So having that availability, having that coordination with the fire department, which I'm sure you will have, to provide breaking news to the internet is really what's happening today. People are going on the internet, they're getting that information, and having that up-to-date will be wonderful. The two questions I have, one is, did I understand you to say that right now we're looking at these Part I crimes and going in the future to having more on there on the second level of crimes?
Yes, and we follow the pattern of the other agencies that have ventured into this issue, and with the high-risk offenders, there are fewer enough of them that we can actually verify the information is right. We can check on their location, we can communicate with Oxnard or Ventura or the appropriate police department to make sure they are where they registered to be. There are some liability issues in putting the wrong information or not putting right information on because people rely on it. So for the bulk, it's too large for us to verify locally, we're relying on the DOJ site, and the Attorney General is gonna bring that online. We're just gonna link directly to his system. He's responsible for that system, so the county avoids being responsible for any mistakes they make. But the information is as good as is available anywhere, and that information may be available as quickly as a month, maybe as long as five, depending on how long it takes them to work out the bugs.
And I do, I read a quote I think from Supervisor Long, that this will help to increase public safety, and people will have an opportunity to know what's in their neighborhood and take precautions. The other question I had, when you stated the three levels of crime, the ones that were the minor ones included, was it sexual, statutory rape? How is that a minor crime?
Well, that's what the law specifies. It has a category of crimes that tend to make people less of predators. Most statutory rapes are a 19-year-old having consensual sex with a 17-year-old. That's not the public threat that many of the other category crimes are. So when you talk about primarily misdemeanor crimes, they're worried about, you know, they think the intent of the laws, they're worried about the stigmatizing that goes on if you put a 19-year-old, for example, on this website.
I guess I wasn't clear on what statutory rape is.
And he may not be really a threat to anyone. So I think that's why they made the breaking.
Thanks for that clarification.
Supervisor Flynn, if an offender moves, I would imagine an offender looking at that, saying, where shall I go next? What control's that?
Well, they're obligated to report to the county that they move to and re-register there, and they're also obligated to periodically re-register in the county that they live in. We have gone out with investigators and checked on registered sex offenders in our county based on the database. We've found people that have been dead for six years, we have people who have just completely vanished off the radar. So we know that the quality of that second-tier information is really not probably more than 60, 70% accurate. It's still valuable, but it's not dependable like the high-risk cases are that we can actually check on. Supervisor Flynn?
Yeah, I don't want to drag this out, but I had just a quick question. On the breaking news, who's responsible for the updates and coordinating? Is it just, you're gonna run it through OES, and there'll be one person that will update from both fire and if fire's involved? And your department? How's that interfaced? It's just a quick question, simple answer.
Well, it's a good question, because we have different kinds of news events. For example, we just had a homicide in Newbury Park. If we had the need to go to the public for information on a crime like that, it would probably come from our major crime investigators, but it would come to my office. The filter is at my office. If it's a natural disaster or a fire, then it comes through OES, but it'd also come to my office, because that's where the web center is, that's where we make the changes in it. We want to make sure we have local control of that, so that it can't be changed anywhere in the department, then we can lose track of what's happening.
Okay, thank you. And one thing on a follow-up, Supervisor Flynn, you know, you've always seen the, well, you have it. I've always seen the most-wanted posters and, you know, pictures in the post office and that. Is there a reason you could not post just pictures of convicted offenders regardless of whether you know exactly where they are, not just for public awareness and maybe somebody could identify them and find them, or any other person you're looking for?
Even on our old website, we had our most-wanted list. People that we were looking for primarily involved with major crimes, homicides, rapes, those kinds of things, had been on our website in the past. Anything we need help from the public, it just wasn't nearly as easy to work with as this one. But we use that as a tool to get that information out, kind of a local version of the Mirac's Most Wanted.
I hate to admit that I didn't spend time looking at the most-wanted list, so I'm glad it's now user-friendly.
Anything else?
I'm tempted to put our pictures up there.
Never once. Any other questions? Sheriff, thank you very much for attending this morning. Appreciate it. Supervisor, Mr. Johnson?
I'd just like to add two comments to that. One is to thank the Sheriff and his command staff, that one of the things that this county, all of the elected department heads, as well as the Board of Supervisors, made as a priority, at least when I was coming into this job, was to not only do our jobs, but to emphasize public service. And this is a real service to the public, because we can do our job in other ways, and this is not easy to do, and doesn't happen if the top people are not both receptive to it and conversant in it. And so this is sort of an extraordinarily, you know, fine piece of work that is being done by the Sheriff's Office, because maintaining it is a real obligation and a responsibility that, when we talked three years ago about getting into something like this, I know that was one of the things that worried everybody, and so the fact that you've gone forward with it despite all the other problems that we're faced with, I really appreciate it, and I think that that should be recognized.
Thank you. It's the right thing to do, and through the creativity of our staff, we found a way to do it without spending any additional money, just using inside resources. And so it may have been scaled down for what we would have liked to have done on a broader scale, but it's practically a benefit to the public, and we're pleased with that.
Thank you again, Sheriff. We have our last 9:30 time-certain item, and for the benefit of the board, I'd just let you know that the United States Senate recently passed a resolution declaring December 12th as National Children's Memorial Day, honoring children that have passed away. And so it seems very appropriate that we have this resolution today for the Compassionate Friends Ventura County, Ventura, California chapter of honoring compassionate friends. And that is an organization that tries to help families deal with the grieving that they go through when they lose a child. And so I'd like to ask Marvin Short and Marcia Holling if you would come down. And I'm gonna read a few things from this resolution for everybody here. "But the Compassionate Friends Ventura, California chapter is chartered by a national nonprofit organization. There are over 600 chapters in the United States, and for 26 years, they've provided support to families throughout the United States following the death of a child. We lose approximately 80,000 infants, children, and teenagers from a myriad of causes in the United States, and the death of a child at any age, from pregnancy loss to loss of an adult child, is considered to be one of the greatest tragedies that a parent or family will endure. Consequently, the Compassionate Friends Ventura County provides Ventura County parents and siblings grieving the death of a child of any age with bi-monthly peer meetings, information, and a supportive network of other families that have also experienced the loss of a child." And so it's with great pleasure that we present you with this resolution and invite you to make any comments you'd like to make to the board at this point in time.
Well, from all of us, I'd like to say to the board, in memory of our children, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. I hear a request for a break. Why don't we go ahead and do that for a couple minutes before we come back to item 27? We have no other time certens outside of our closed session. So we'll come back at exactly 10 after, that's seven minutes. All right?[1446.65] I hear a request for a break. Why don't we go ahead and do that for a couple minutes before we come back to item 27? We have no other time certens outside of our closed session. So we'll come back at exactly 10 after. That's seven minutes. All right. All right. Okay. We'll call the board back into session and bring us back to item 27. We were asking questions, so we do have two public speaker cards, but want to continue with questions if we have any other questions for staff before we go to public speaker cards. Do you have any other questions for staff? Supervisor Long?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Supervisor Long?
Well, that was, I wanted to hear from them because I expected they did some homework.
Okay.
Trying to understand the information.
Ms. Finan.
So the previous testimony that was two acres was inaccurate?
And just to correct you, the supervisor phoned me to ask that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Phine. And then in terms of the income to the lessee, they did help with this calling. If you assume their current rate on 40-foot slips, which is a higher rate per foot than on some of the slips that are on here of $9.50 per foot, the additional income to the lessee is just under $110,000 a year, of which $27,000 would be to the county. So it's about $110,000 a year in additional income, more or less. In terms of slips in this plan, what we use, because of the way the slip sizes work in this illustrative plan, are slips between 26 feet and 34 feet. Thirty-six percent for 149 slips are from the 26 to 34-foot range. If you add in those slips below 26 feet, we're at 188 slips, or 46 percent of the marina as a whole. Finally, I just wanted to add in, and I should have added, that during my initial presentation is that the Harbor Commission did review this. I'm sorry I didn't say that earlier, and they were unanimous in their support of this item. And I'd just like to express a caution about putting severe limits. Obviously, the board can do whatever it chooses to do on this, on the requirements on this leasehold, but if the board is going to establish requirements in terms of size, and then the Coastal Commission is also going to, if the lessee has to meet both your requirements and their requirements, we could end up with a marina not worth building, and I would be very disappointed to see that happen. So I'm not telling you you shouldn't do it. I'm just asking that you exercise caution because this is a very dicey area we're now in.
Supervisor Long?
I'm sorry. I was trying to write and think at the same time. It was difficult. Could you do the last percentages again of the slips that you?
Yes. Let me just repeat them all.
Slips, oh, okay. Eight tenths of an acre added.
Right.
Income of about $110,000 per year to the lessee. Slip sizes between 26 feet and 34 feet, including 26 and 34, are 149 slips, or 36 percent in this draft plan. If you add in those slips below 26 feet, it's 188 slips, or 46 percent of the total. So 46 percent are 34 feet and less. 36 percent are between 26 and 34.
Okay. Do you have other questions for staff? All right. We have two public speaker cards. Mr. Johnson?
I just wanted to support the Harbor Commissioner's comment. This is not to be critical of staff, or the public, or the board, just that cautionary note that when government enters into enterprise activities, it is a very difficult line to walk between meeting all of the public, you know, comment and everyone's opinions throughout a community, and also the business plan to make it successful. That's one of the reasons why businesses, they look at us in government and say, what on earth are you folks, you know, doing? You know, why we could do that much cheaper? One of the reasons we can't do it much cheaper is we do have an obligation to listen to everybody and to try to come up with the very best plan, but we still need to recognize there are some fundamental economic and business principles to be successful. And one of the difficulties in the harbor has been is we've had lots of opinions, but we have almost paralyzed ourselves in some respects. Not intentionally, everybody individually trying to do their part and do it well, but collectively, the result has been that if there are too many restrictions and too many layers of government, which is not the fault of the public or your board, but it's just the facts of life out there, that by the time we layer all of this, it can make it so difficult that the average business enterprise would say, you know, we're frustrated, we can't make money, there's too much uncertainty. So somehow, we've got to try to balance that, and so I just want to be sure that we recognize that it's not just about public input or just about business principles. It's a combination.
Okay. Our first public speaker, Vicky Finan. Good morning, Ms. Finan.
Good morning, Ms. Finan. Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Vicky Finan. I'm speaking on behalf of the Beacon Foundation. The Beacon Foundation is a nonprofit organization focused on coastal Ventura County, and we are celebrating our 10th year of protection and advocacy for coastal resources. I'd like to point out to you that the lease alterations that you're being asked to approve are major and not minor. You have not been provided with the actual proposed lease amendment, but given a request by your staff to give this to the attorneys and come back afterwards. The board should not delegate the lease approval, and certainly not an increase in such, which is such a major increase. I will focus on the most major aspect of the proposed amendment. This is the proposal to move the existing pierheads 20 feet further into the main channel of the harbor and to allow the permanent tie-down of vessels on the outer edge of that extension. Please particularly note that this is an outright addition of the leasehold. It is not a correction of a survey, surveying error. There is some confusion about whether it's how big it is. We believe that it is almost two acres, and that this is presently open water. This area is almost as big as a regular NFL football field. It's a large space. Especially down there where the space is very limited. Sequa exemption under Class 1 is expressly limited to minor alterations and must involve only negligible or no expansion of use. Under Class 2, be expressly limited to the replacement of existing facilities, both these. Clearly, this can have a significant effect on the water and navigation in the harbor. There is no way to fit these changes into an exemption for sequa. This and the other proposed changes must be subject to sequa review. We urge the board not to approve this item. It should not, it should not consider until you've been provided with the actual written agreement and what the dock design is supposed to be. Both the lease agreement and the documents you have provided say that they're substantially the design of the docks, so you should be able to go by what is said in that and not say that this is just, you know, some kind of change. And so that I, but I would like that you would not approve this today and ask that it come back when you can see it and it's on paper and we can see what it all involves. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Finan. Our next speaker, Lee Clayton.
Good morning, Mr. Bennett. Good morning, the board. I'm Lee Clayton, also for the Beacon Foundation. Mrs. Finan has already talked about the size of this project, which is quite considerable when you're talking about taking open water areas and converting them to use by this tenant. It's very important, I think, to keep in mind that this is not a correction. This is a granting of an additional nearly 10 percent of the leasehold expansion to this entrepreneur. And I think you are entitled, at the time of being asked to change your lease and expand the leasehold, to consider all aspects of that, including certainly the configuration of what this tenant intends to put in that space for up to 40 years. I'd like to focus on something else which has not been mentioned today, and that's the Crowdy Public Works Plan. I asked the clerk to distribute these few pages from this plan which you approved on October 19th. I distributed the one that has the interminations because I wanted to point out what's new and what's not. The text that you have before you is the text that you approved to amend the Public Works Plan of 1986. First of all, I'd like to point out the third page in here where various policies are expressed.
Say, "Third page"?
The third page, the second page after the title page.
Title 58?
Page 58, yes. Where the policies is stated that in order to have uncongested waterways, certain policies are adopted, and then they are listed. And turning to the next page, the one that is completely pertinent to this project in the yellow-marked section, it says, "The existing open areas in the inner harbor, as depicted on the land use map," and that would be this area, "as waterways and as defined by existing pierhead lines at the time of original approval by the California Coastal Commission of the Harbor Public Works Plan shall not be developed with surface structures of any kind, floating or otherwise, except in case of emergency where temporary structures are required." So this is foreclosed without an amendment to the Public Works Plan. Furthermore, the amendment that you submitted, now looking at page 5, which is the second page in this little packet, this is the amendment that you approved, which now is very specific and says that existing development, that the Harbor Department does not have plans for any major expansion or reconstruction of the harbor basins. So now, the focal point has been placed on the fact that expansion of the basins is not within the Public Works Plan without an amendment. I think that's a very important matter. Another matter of importance is the whole issue of sequa. I don't think it's appropriate to sort of say, well, the Coastal Commission will take care of this. I think that you, as the landlord, and also as our elected public officials, need to be sure this project is in compliance with not only your own Public Works Plan, but with known Coastal Act requirements for protection of recreational boating. I think the sections cited by Mrs. Finan clearly show that this cannot possibly fit within an exemption to sequa. So it is subject to sequa. It is not consistent with the Public Works Plan. It is a major change. You are being asked to grant more than the tenant now has, and if you're going to do that, number one, you need to see an actual document in front of you. The idea that this authority would be delegated to staff when it is this board's responsibility to approve leases, and we can see there are some very substantial issues in this one, I think should be unacceptable. So you need to have an actual lease before you. I see no reason why you don't. The problem, as stated in the staff report, or the desire to make changes apparently was known as early as July. Well, it's now December. Why isn't there a defined amendment before you? If you allow this to be taken behind closed doors by delegating this authority to staff, which I think would be improper, you are also pulling from public view the terms of this lease, and I think that would be quite contrary to an open public government. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Clayton. I'd like to have staff respond to the issue of the Public Works Plan says no expansion of the basin, that issue that was raised by Mr. Clayton. What's your response?
There are really two issues here, and the latter was language of the lease to be before you. This requires no changes to the language of the lease as it's currently written. All that would change is the property description that is attached to the lease in the back. And so it would be part of the survey document that's done. While that amendment is being done, the 20 feet would be added. The survey would be completed, and what you would have before you is a meets and bounds description, which, as I said before, we're happy to bring to you if you'd like. I don't get much out of meets and bounds descriptions. I usually have to give them to a surveyor for verification myself, but if you would like that to come back to you, we certainly can do that. As to the issue of sequa, I think County Council, and Mr. Claybaum is here, has made it very clear that they believe at this point that the exemption does apply. In terms of the Public Works Plan, my understanding, and we have already discussed this informally with Coastal Commission staff on a couple of occasions, they see the actual pierhead line because it's such a small change as a de minimis change, and one that could be handled as part of the application for vintage marina. The other part is not talking about expanding the basins within the harbor. Their understanding and mine, when you read it in context in the Public Works Plan, is that no additional basins are to be added. Not that the configuration of the basins would never change, or that in repair or revetment, they could not be enlarged, but that no additional basins. Because as you recall, at the time, well, I wasn't here, many of you weren't, at the time the Public Works Plan was taken forward, two additional basins, in fact, where the original vintage marina and Pacific Corinthian marinas are now, had just finished being dug. So the idea was there were not going to be any more areas dug to create basins.
What's the definition of a basin from a harbor standpoint?
A basin is the notched-out area that's created for placement of marina or other structures.
Okay. Does that, how does that, how does the whole sea bridge development fit then?
Well, it's not within the harbor, so they had their own specific plan for creation of waterways.
Okay. Okay. Other questions for staff? Supervisor Parks?
The issue brought up regarding the Public Works Plan in response that the 20 feet is de minimis, I just, I was wondering if the County Council could address that when it says shall not be developed with surface structures of any kind, and here we'd be putting, I would imagine, some more docks?
No, even before you speak, the answer, the other part of this is if there is an amendment that's required, then the lessee would have to seek that amendment and get the board's approval to do so.
I'm just wondering, at this point, the staff's contention is this is de minimis, which to me says therefore it's not really putting structures out in the middle of the harbor, which to me is, it seems really clear in this wording.
Supervisor Parks, I fear I'm disadvantaged because I don't have a copy of what has been provided, number one, and we haven't had an opportunity to review it carefully. So I would hesitate to shoot from the hip.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and I didn't mean to say in the middle of the harbor. I understand that this is an extension of the docks. It's the last page, item G. I guess that's, that's something I just would like to have ironed out, and you said it may need a Public Works Plan amendment, so I'm kind of hearing two things. When I think of how we process land use applications, I would think that this would require, you know, if you had, if you're dividing a parcel or merging a parcel, that is considered a real, you know, quantity of land. So I'm just wondering, what is de minimis? What is the threshold that defines de minimis? If this says you shall not extend into the harbor, and you do extend into it, you're saying, but not much? I don't know. So that's just something I'd ask for the council. The only other question I have, I appreciated Vintage's agreement that they could do some changing of the plans to increase the number of boats that are in the majority size right now, so it isn't reduced to 9 percent.
Other questions? I have two. Go ahead, Supervisor Mike. Do you have a question? I have two. One, do you have a copy of what was passed out?
I just got one from the clerk.
Okay, so you have the one that says page 59.
with known Coastal Act requirements for protection of recreational boating. I think the sections cited by Mrs. Finan clearly show that this cannot possibly fit within an exemption to SEQA. So it is subject to SEQA. It is not consistent with the Public Works Plan. It is a major change. You are being asked to grant more than the tenant now has. And if you're going to do that, number one, you need to see an actual document in front of you. The idea that this authority would be delegated to staff when it is this board's responsibility to approve leases, and we can see there are some very substantial issues in this one, I think should be unacceptable. So you need to have an actual lease before you. I see no reason why you don't. The problem, as stated in the staff report, or the desire to make changes apparently was known as early as July. Well, it's now December. Why isn't there a defined amendment before you? If you allow this to be taken behind closed doors by delegating this authority to staff, which I think would be improper, you are also pulling from public view the terms of this lease, and I think that would be quite contrary to an open public government. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Clayton. I'd like to have staff respond to the issue of the Public Works Plan says no expansion of the basin, that issue that was raised by Mr. Clayton. What's your response?
There are really two issues here, and the latter was language of the lease to be before you. This requires no changes to the language of the lease as it's currently written. All that would change is the property description that is attached to the lease in the back. And so it would be part of the survey document that's done. While that amendment is being done, the twenty feet would be added. The survey would be completed, and what you would have before you is a meets and bounds description, which, as I said before, we're happy to bring to you if you'd like. I don't get much out of meets and bounds descriptions. I usually have to give them to a surveyor for verification myself. But if you would like that to come back to you, we certainly can do that. As to the issue of SEQA, I think County Council, and Mr. Claybaum is here, has made it very clear that they believe at this point that the exemption does apply. In terms of the Public Works Plan, my understanding, and we have already discussed this informally with Coastal Commission staff on a couple of occasions, they see the actual pierhead line because it's such a small change as a de minimis change, and one that could be handled as part of the application for vintage marina. The other part is not talking about expanding the basins within the harbor. Their understanding and mine, when you read it in context in the Public Works Plan, is that no additional basins are to be added. Not that the configuration of the basins would never change, or that in repair or revement, they could not be enlarged, but that no additional basins. Because as you recall, at the time, well, I wasn't here, many of you weren't, at the time the Public Works Plan was taken forward, two additional basins, in fact, where the original vintage marina and Pacific Corinthian marinas are now, had just finished being dug. So the idea was there were not going to be any more areas dug to create basins.
What's the definition of a basin from a harbor standpoint?
A basin is the notched-out area that's created for placement of marina or other structures.
Okay. Does that, how does that, how does the whole Seabridge development fit then?
Well, it's not within the harbor. So they had their own specific plan for creation of waterways.
Okay. Okay. Other questions for staff? Supervisor Parks.
The issue brought up regarding the Public Works Plan, in response that the twenty feet is de minimis, I just, I was wondering if the County Council could address that when it says shall not be developed with surface structures of any kind, and here we'd be putting, I would imagine, some more docks?
No, even still before you speak, the answer, the other part of this is if there is an amendment that's required, then the lessee would have to seek that amendment and get the board's approval to do so.
I'm just wondering, at this point, the staff's contention is this is de minimis, which to me says therefore it's not really putting structures out in the middle of the harbor, which to me seems really clear in this wording.
Supervisor Parks, I fear I'm disadvantaged because I don't have a copy of what has been provided, number one, and we haven't had an opportunity to review it carefully. So I would hesitate to shoot from the hip.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and I didn't mean to say in the middle of the harbor. I understand that this is an extension of the docks. It's the last page, item G. I guess that's something I just would like to have ironed out, and you said it may need a Public Works Plan amendment, so I'm kind of hearing two things. When I think of how we process land use applications, I would think that this would require, you know, if you had, if you were dividing a parcel or merging a parcel, that is considered a real, you know, quantity of land. So I'm just wondering, what is de minimis? What is the threshold that defines de minimis? If this says you shall not extend into the harbor, and you do extend into it, you're saying, "But not much," I don't know. So that's just something I'd ask for the council. The only other question I have, I appreciated Vintage's agreement that they could do some changing of the plans to increase the number of boats that are in the majority size right now, so it isn't reduced to nine percent.
Other questions? I have two. Go ahead, Supervisor Mike, if you have a question. I have two. One, do you have a copy of what was passed out?
I just got one from the clerk.
Okay, so you have the one that says page fifty-nine.
Yes.
Down at the bottom.
Right.
Number three. If you read number three, it says, "To provide, for, protect, encourage, and increase recreational boating use of coastal waterways, following policy shall be implemented," and then G. "Existing open water areas in the inner harbor as depicted on the land use map as waterways and as defined by existing pierhead lines at the time of original approval by the California Coastal Commission and the Harbor Public Works Plan shall not be developed with surface structures of any kind, floating or otherwise, except in case of emergency." Shall not be developed with surface structures of any kind. How do you respond to that, that this, that this policy doesn't affect that?
Well, in part because we've had real difficulty determining what the recorded pierhead lines are. There has never been any filing of pierhead lines. In fact, we did a lot of work in this area. It had to do with the Boating Instruction and Safety Center, and worked through the Coast Guard and the Army Corps of Engineers where those are normally filed. So what we're calling pierhead lines now are what have been used in practice, but they're not officially recorded. In talking to Coastal Commission staff, obviously, they could be pushed into another position, but they didn't feel a twenty feet change one way or the other on a three hundred and some foot basin was going to be a huge modification.
Okay. My other question may be a combination of you and Mr. Dunn, but the board passed a restriction saying we want to make sure at least twenty-five percent of the leases were thirty feet or less, right? So my question is, if, I mean, did some, you know, Supervisor Parks was talking about boats in the twenty-eight to thirty-two foot length not being available, did we take some, by that action of the board when we said at least twenty-five percent of them have to be thirty feet or less, did that knock some out of the twenty-eight to thirty-two foot range and move them down?
And did it actually say thirty feet or less?
What's that?
And did it actually say thirty feet or less?
What do you mean, did it actually say?
I don't remember specific thirty feet or less. I think what we're looking at for this, that majority, small boats that are out there, and I don't, I don't know that the figure thirty was used, thirty feet.
Yes, I believe it was used.
I remember, I remember you making that motion.
And it was to protect the majority of boats that are out there.
So I guess, I mean, so what, my question is, is do we now have more twenty footers, you know, to meet that requirement? We have now more twenty footers or twenty-four footers, and has that decreased the twenty-eight to thirty-two foot range? Right. Mr. Dunn, you want to try your hand at this, and see you bending down or whatever? It may not be a question that you can answer right now. You've got to get in front of the microphone again. There's a microphone.
The thirty feet is actually in our lease as part of an amendment to the approval of our lease back in December. You know, to the, to the question, yes, the thirty feet did kind of knock out all the thirty-twos that we could count in that range, forced us down actually from maybe a thirty, consideration of a thirty-two foot slip, because we had a requirement in our lease that said thirty feet and under. But now that we're coming back, we're taking a look at the thirty-six to thirty, the twenty-six to thirty-four foot range, and we have thirty-six percent in this plan to accommodate that, Supervisor Parks has pointed out, that biggest group in our marina. We don't have twenty-eights, and we don't have thirty-twos, so when you just take the twenty-eight to thirty-two, it's a little bit too narrow. But a twenty-six foot slip certainly can accommodate a twenty-eight foot boat, and a thirty-four can accommodate a thirty-two foot boat, and there's only a slight difference in cost.
Looks like Supervisor Parks wants that.
I think, I do have a chart which I would be glad to get to the board, particularly if we're going to look at this further, that shows that you're actually adding what we don't have presently at all, which is thirty-nine slips available for twenty footers and twenty-four footers. We don't have any of those. The smallest slip we have right now out there, I understand, is twenty-five. So we're going to-
Four, twenty-five is about the same, but the thirty-twenty is actually a big change, that's correct. And the twenties are along this side where the Boating Center is going to, so we're not really sure about how that design-
Right, so you've increased the number, right, you've increased the number from zero to thirty-nine of the very small boats, twenty footers and such, and eliminated thirty footers and thirty-two footers, if I understand.
Well, we have thirties, we have-
Twenty-eight and thirty-two eliminated.
We went to twenty-sixes.
So if you have the ability to, so that we don't change where we have fifty-six percent in that twenty-eight to thirty-two, so that they can no longer use the dock spaces.
Well, currently, we have thirty in this plan, kind of in that range, twenty-six to thirty-four, so.
To thirty-four, but twenty-eight to thirty-two, you got nine percent. So I know, I think it would be helpful to have this information because it is, it is a huge reduction for people who have boats. And this, these boats, I understand, are the predominant, you know, while we say fifty-six percent now, those are also the ones that are the powerboats, your Catalinas, the ones that are most popular. So I just, my emphasis is, while as Johnny was saying, it's really important that we, you know, understand the economics of this and make sure that it's profitable for you, and we appreciate the fact that you'll be upgrading this marina, we also have a responsibility to the, and even the Coastal Commission gives us, to assure that, you know, that people can get out there and use boats and not displace what is a majority base of boaters right now, and adding what we've never had before, which are boats over, I guess, forty-eight feet. So you're getting into the seventies, the nineties, and so we're adding some big boats, and then you're adding some really small boats, and at the expense, I think, of that most popular range.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. You can step down. I just want to comment on that in terms of my thought about that, and that is that we have a responsibility to blend. I mean, the harbor can't be operated just purely on market principles, so we have a responsibility. I mean, somebody could come in and say, "Hey, we can make more money by doing all hundred-foot, you know, docks," and we'd have to say, "Hey, that's not, you know, that's not in the public's interest." So we have some responsibility to do some grand overview of that, but there is a limit to how far the board should, in this capacity, I think, get down into the finer details of the marketing part of this. To make the contention that, that going from thirty-two to thirty-four is, you know, is a dramatic disadvantage for people, I mean, if somebody's running a slip in the twenty-eight to thirty-two, and we say, you know, we're going to have thirty-six percent of them in the twenty-six to thirty-four, and we say, "Well, that means they're going to have to pay rent on an extra two feet," I don't think that's a significant disadvantage. So we're not talking nine percent. I think we're realistically talking thirty-six percent. And now we're trying to say, you know, should we design this market for exactly what's there now, or should we design the market for the next thirty years? And I think that, you know, that's what you try to have professionals do, is help you design the market for the next thirty years. In fact, we've put, we've imposed one thing on there, that our twenty-five percent restriction, which is, as you said, we have more big docks, but we also have more of the twenty footers. And my guess is we wouldn't have had more of the twenty footers had we not put that in there. And so, you know, the market may be saying, "Put in more big docks." Our board's regulation may be forcing more of these twenty footers, and then we're citing that as a, as a problem, decreasing the mid-range here at this point in time. I think this is a reasonable mid-range. If twenty-six to thirty-four feet is thirty-six percent, what we have to do is just go, is this stuff reasonable? So I'm not, I'm not going to be supportive of trying to take it to a finer level of detail. We already have one restriction in there that I, that I was willing to support last time very cautiously because I wanted to make sure we protected the small boaters. But now we're saying, "We've got to protect the small boater, we've got to protect this mid-range boater." We're going to layer too many things in there for me to be comfortable with, so I'd be comfortable with this. The only thing that I have a question about that I'm trying to deal with is when we have specific language that says, "Existing open waterways," you know, "shall not be developed with surface structures of any kind," that's pretty specific language, and I would like to not have this kind of stuff show up on the day that these things show up, because that kind of, that kind of stuff is more difficult. I am, in the interest of moving this, I don't see it as so severe that I want to try to say, but I want to, I want to say I don't want to have that kind of, you know, I want this, if the Public Works Plan has something like this in it, needs to be addressed in the board letter so that I can research it before I get here on Tuesday to figure out what we have. So that's the only thing that I have a concern with, but in terms of the marketing side of this, the rest of this, I'd be willing to go forward. Other board member comments? Supervisor Michael's then, Flynn.
Yes, thank you. I believe that what's before us is reasonable, and certainly I echo Supervisor Bennett, Chair Bennett's concern to have something like that show up. Now, certainly, I heard the Harbor Director say that should there be the need for an amendment, in the opinion of the Coastal Commission, or our attorneys, or whatever, that the lessee would accommodate that and pay for that, that change, which is the common way that things are done, and I'm not uncomfortable with that. If there needs to be a change, if this is the, you know, if this is the right thing to do, and it requires a change, and it's, and it goes through the proper procedures, I'm uncomfortable with that. I think the only thing that should happen in that case is that it be called out in the board letter, that there, that this may precipitate a need at which time the lessee has agreed to blah, 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 whatever the words are. Overall, I think this is a positive move in the right direction. I was very concerned, as, maybe even more so than Supervisor Bennett, about the restriction that we put on the smaller boats, because I've always believed that we need that the businesspeople who are leasing from us needs a certain modicum of flexibility to meet the market, and especially in a long-term lease. We have no idea what the market is going to do. It could go one way or the other, larger to small. And having run a retail business, I know how fickle the public is, and their decisions as to what's the soup to jur. But overall, I think this is the right thing to do, and I'm very supportive of getting all of the legal descriptions done correctly, recorded correctly, and attached correctly, because those are the types of things that we spend more time arguing over and cause us more grief than some of the more esoteric discussions that we have. And so I think it's incumbent upon us that we're always sure of at least our recorded documents, our legal descriptions, and those types of things. Overall, I'm very supportive. I think there's more board discussion, so I'll refrain at the moment from making a motion for approval, but I am prepared to go forward with this, and think that it would be important on a lease of this length that every few years we get a market discussion back from either the lessee or the Harbor Department or both, as to what are, what are the movements in the market? What are the futures of boating and boaters since we have this asset that we're trying to help make perform? Supervisor Flynn.
There are three issues that you bring to the board, am I right, Flynn? One is survey, the other is alcohol, and the third one is the twenty-foot issue. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I have no trouble with adopting the survey and the alcohol today, but I would prefer to, to continue the item on the twenty-foot issue for a number of reasons. One of the reasons is perhaps Johnny Johnson alluded to, and I don't necessarily agree with everything he said, seems to me that we remove a lot of problems if we simply bring everything for the public to view. Once we start going behind doors or assigning a, an amendment for Johnny, or the County Council, or the director to approve, then we've taken it out of the public view, and I don't think that's proper. I don't think that's our charge. I agree with the other parts of what Johnny had to say, but the public view will always, if we get things in the public view, it will lessen our difficulties. We've really had a lot of difficulties at this harbor. I think that the, the issue that we see here with the twenty-foot, I think that's a major amendment that we're looking at, not a minor amendment. And so I would have some trouble unless I can be convinced otherwise, and number two, that it be exempt, categorically be exempt, under the California Environmental Quality Act. If you look back at our history in the harbor, starting with the BISC some time ago, we tried that exemption with the BISC, and that didn't work. Then we tried another modified exemption, that didn't work, and now we're into a full-blown EIR for the Coastal Commission to consider. So this, this simply is not something that at this time I can support because I don't have enough information. I don't know what is meant when the County Council says minor or major. This to me seems to be a major amendment. We're talking about a small span of water in the whole harbor, and we're sticking out twenty feet on docks A through I. If you just take those and multiply out the increase in width, you're talking about a lot of surface water. I don't know about acres, but a lot of surface water. So I would have to look at that to see what, what impact that's going to have, if any, on the boats moving through that harbor, on congestion through that harbor. One thing, it says here, "All costs will be paid by the lessee, no fiscal impact to the harbor." Fiscal impact can be a positive impact as well as a negative. What is the positive impact? We don't know. At least I don't know at this point, even though Supervisor Parks raised the questions. I think that's all of the, the issues I have right now, but I would like to have more time to go down and look at the issue, to look at the expanse, to look at what the amendment will do. At this point, as I said, I would approve the survey and the alcohol exemption. Mr. Johnson, additions?
Just a point of clarification, everybody, good news, Supervisor Flynn, I think you and I agree more than you think. If, if anything in my remarks was interpreted as a suggestion to remove the process from public view, then I apologize for my poor choice of words, because nothing in what I said or what I heard from the Harbor manager was suggesting your board not do this in public view. It was just simply the responsibility for balancing the enterprise economic market issues with the variety of opinions throughout the county as to how carefully we, micromanaging control things is something that's difficult to do, and we just have to keep it in mind, but certainly not to remove anything from public view.
Supervisor Chair, I'd like to just clarify. What I'm reading here on the page two, "Upon receipt of the survey and review, a standard lease amendment incorporating revised lease parcel description will be prepared to be reviewed and approved by the CEO of County Council. Upon their final approval, we are requesting the director to be authorized to approve in this lease amendment inserting the description into the lease." Now, I assume that concludes the twenty-foot part, right? Flynn?
That's correct. And just a point of clar-
Let me just make a point, then. You know, it does take it out of the public view if the staff is going to be the approving entities here. And I agree with most of what he said.
Good.
I don't think, I don't think Mr. Johnson's comments were about that aspect of the thing. His were about, about whether we're going to go the fifty-six percent and the twenty-two, that kind of stuff, not on what process we're going to follow with this coming back. But, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
I'm just saying, but my understanding from what Ms. Gregor said and what our office said was, is that that is the way in which we were suggesting we do it, not to take it out of public view, but to streamline, expedite the process, however, if your board wishes to do it the other way, feeling that there are certain important points in here that you want to further review in public. I mean, there's certainly, take as much time as you need. We've been at this for forty-some-odd years, and one of the problems is, is at some point we do have to deal with these things. We're just doing the best we can. Supervisor Vaughn?
I think that what is before us is very appropriate. I think that we do have, convoluted or not, a process that does require the Coastal Commission to take a look at this and other parties that have jurisdiction. So whether or not we act today, we know it goes to the Coastal Commission, and they end up right back to us anyway, or may not. I have to trust that staff has done their good due diligence and their work, and certainly it's in the interest of the leasehold, leasehold- and certainly it's in the interest of the leasehold, leaseholder to do their due diligence because time is money to, to that leasehold. And so, I, I'm frankly fine with moving ahead with the action. I, I think that this board has taken steps to probably do more of the work of the harbor in the public than it's ever done in the last forty years, in the last five years. And, and I think that's good and, and appropriate, but I also feel at some point you, you trust the work of your staff and you trust the work of, of those who have invested in the public's harbor so that the work can proceed and you don't hold up that investment. And I, and I think that the direction of this board and the policy of, of making sure there's a diversity of footholds there was, was a good one and appears to be a healthy one. I, I think that when we, if we get into the semantics of defining language, that frankly either ends up in legal battles and lawsuits, it becomes more costly both to the taxpayers of this county and to obviously the, the goal of what I believe we still have for this county, which is to get it on sound financial footing. And so, I, I support the recommended actions presented to us today.
If I could, I have two, two things that I'd like to, to deal with. One, the question of the open process. We do have a number of controversial things that, that take place in the harbor and so, I, I would encourage us, when in doubt, keep it open. It is, it is a charge that is not worth us having to, to try to respond to, so I'm going to support that this come back to the board when you have this, this, this final document, you know, rather than it be, be done in that. That being said, because of this commitment, I too think that we have a responsibility as a board and as a staff to try to handle these things as efficiently as possible in an open process. So, we don't have a situation where we paralyze ourselves because we, these things come back. We have a tendency sometimes with an issue that gets controversial to then let it, you know, paralyze us. So, hopefully we'll be able to, but, but, but if, if the price of open government is we have to take more time, that's the price that, that I'm certainly very committed to pay and at the same time I don't want to unnecessarily, you know, chew up time and keep us from getting on to other things. So, I would, I just think that we ought to have this thing come back open. What I would like to do is ask staff to help me with how we can go forward in spite of this public works plan. What is an, what is an appropriate way to go forward? And let, let me give you an example. Let's say you would have said, you know, "We think we should go forward," and you, you pointed this out and you said, "The reason we think you should go forward is X, Y, or Z. Can you give me the reasons why we should go forward, X, Y, or Z?" In other words, what would, what, what's going to happen? I know one thing, if the Coastal Commission says, "No, you need a public works plan amendment because of this," then we know that the, that Vintage is going to be paying for that. Is that an appropriate position for us to be in? Should we, is there something else we should do? Are we going to call this? I would, I would think that in the interest of open government, we would call this out to the Coastal Commission early and go, "Look, it's here, we're trying to get your opinion. Do we have to do something with this or not?" I don't, I'm not trying to hide it or anything else. At the same time, I'm willing to go forward if there is a rational procedure that goes forward that will call out something that our staff says, "We think this is de minimis." Tell us.
I would say probably, and then I'll back up, the lessee would have two options. If the staff changed their opinion and said an amendment was required, they could come back and say, "We don't want the 20 feet." And, and clearly it wouldn't be that difficult to change the description to, to take that back out. This has been in public view, I appreciate your recognition of that. The Harbor Commission spent a fair amount of time at their meeting two months ago debating this matter before they, it was not just a rubber stamp. They did spend some time looking at the slips and the sizes and all of that, and several of them are boaters in the harbor and their support was unanimous. I think the benefits of moving ahead are that we would not lose as many slips regardless of size. We would not lose as many slips for boater access. I mean, with this plan, we're looking at going from 520 some slips to 400 and some slips, just over 400. I think it's 405. Without that 20-foot extension, we will be under the 400 mark, which if we don't have to do that, I think would be a service to the boaters to keep as many slips available as possible. To go ahead and submit plans and ask the lessee to go to the expanse to submit plans on the current leasehold parcel and then to entirely redo them after we go to the Coastal Commission and add on the 20 feet, I think is adding a great deal of expense and unnecessary responsibility onto them. So, to move ahead now would preserve the slips for the boaters. It generates some additional income for both the lessee and the county. They've been very good about returning that in services at this point in time, both in the leaseholder, they've been 20 years and where they are now in Channel Islands Harbor Marina. The, this matter unfortunately was not raised by the public at the Harbor Commission and we had had only a preliminary conversation with the Coastal Commission at which they said it was a non-issue, so I beg your pardon for not bringing it to your attention. I guess with so many other details, I just sort of set that aside in my mind and didn't re-raise it for you. If it becomes an issue, there's plenty of opportunity between now and a date of hearing to revise the board's position and we'd certainly be happy to come back. And I think you've worked with me enough now, we're not out there just trying to do our own wishes and not coming back and communicating with the board. If anything, we're probably taking too much of your time. So, I think in the interest of expediency, providing more slips and generating the income that would support the kind of development they're trying to do would be the reasons to move ahead.
Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to, maybe it's part of what you're saying, but I'd like to add one other reason. One of the difficulties in running enterprise funds in a governmental atmosphere is trying to get some direction from the government in order to proceed with the investment. As long as it's not our money in government, we tend to think that it doesn't cost anything, but it does cost somebody, so it's not demean this, but it's sort of like, "We'll talk to your father about this. Go talk to your, we'll talk to your mother about this. We'll talk to your father, you're not getting an answer." And so, one of the ways in which somebody speaks first and said, "Well, if all the other things line up, we would be supportive of this," that gives a great, a, a higher level of certainty to the person who is now going to write the checks to do these things. So, we expect people to do that. At some point we need, I don't, I don't know if this is the time to use that analogy, but that is one of the reasons for your board acting on maybe imperfect information with safeguards built in so that you can come back and if there is a reason to say, "Sorry, you know, we didn't say unequivocally, under all circumstances, you can do as you please." We said under these conditions, we're the right to review, that we are generally in support. You do things like that on your general plan clearance and other things in order to allow people some idea of what the future might hold if they're willing to invest in Ventura County. So, I would say that that is also a reason why, you know, taking some action at some point by the county before it goes to some other board, which we'd have no control over.
Okay. The, so we will, so our action will call this out directly to the Coastal Commission right off the bat as this, as this goes over to them.
Oh, yeah. They're already aware that you're having this discussion today.
Uh-huh, right. In terms of, but in terms of this particular aspect of, of the public works plan. The other thing I just want to point out for the board is, we do have, we do, as always, we have competing interests out there. One of our interests is to try to preserve access and as new regulations come in, like the handicap regulations, if you don't change anything and you just bring in the handicap regulations, you actually decrease the number of people that can keep boats at the harbor. And if, if our goal is to try to make sure the public has, has, has good access to the ocean and, and the beach, you don't want to say, "Okay, because we, because we instituted handicap rules, now we're going to decrease the number of boaters that can, can have access also." So, there's, there's a significant bunch of trade-offs, you know, how do, do people with big boats have a right to have access to the harbor? Do people with small boats, et cetera? So, go ahead, Supervisor Michael.
Yeah, I, basically you brought up the point that I wanted to make and that that is, by moving forward, we're not moving forward without knowledge that there is a potential for need for a change in either a waiver or an amendment or whatever this board should decide to do when something final and substantial comes to us. There's also the added safeguard of the fact that this has to go to the Coastal Commission. So, it's not going to go in an imperfect manner. It is not going to be ramrodded through. But, you know, I go back to my comment about flexibility and Supervisor Bennett made the point that I was going to make and that is, as rules and regulations and laws change, we have to have the ability to be flexible in our plans. And if we are not, if we are so set in concrete, then, then one would judge us as really not caring about the harbor overall and about the enterprise and about the accessibility of all citizens in the county, but only either a small group or restricting accessibility in order to please another group. That is not a position that I care to be in. I am not uncomfortable moving forward with the recommendations of staff. I believe that this has been open, it has been to the commission, it has been before us today, it will probably be before us again, and, and certainly it will be before the Coastal Commission. So, it's not like we are denying any public access to this process by moving forward at this time. And, and I'm trying to think of how to put this other than a Michael's way of putting it. You probably could, but then I couldn't live with any of those. You know, I go back to my statement years ago and I've said it too many times on this dais, that we have a countywide asset. We have oversight of a countywide asset that is owned by all of the taxpayers in this county. I am not a boater. I rely on boaters and people who use it to give me some comfort in what is the norm, not the special, not the special interest, but the norm. And, and I believe that we have quite frankly been unwilling to move forward at times that we clearly had a path that was the right path because we were unwilling to take the flak or we were uncertain about the outcome. At this point in time, I am perfectly comfortable that the safeguards are in place and that if there is a need to do an amendment, amend our decla-, our environmental declaration, the opportunity is there, the opportunity will be taken and that at some point in time we have got to either stand up and stand behind our comments, that this will become an asset to everyone in the county, or we need to sit down and shut up and lock the doors.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, may I only make one short comment?
Sure.
Yeah, it, I brought up this comparison before, but if you compare the way another enterprise fund is run, and that would be with the airports, I think that we have a structure set up with the airport authorities, with the airport commission, and finally with this board, the city involvement and the authorities, that we are able to hash through all these issues before they get to the board. The plant, the commission, you mentioned the Harbor Commission. People always tell me that sit on that Harbor Commission, that they don't get much detail and yet our airport commission gets a lot of detail. I think if we looked at the structure in which we're making decisions, it wouldn't take so long here because we would have things kind of thrashed out before they ever get here and it would all be in the public sector, it would be in the commission, the Harbor Commission playing a bigger role. In the, in the case of the airports, the airport authority meetings are all public. We hash everything out in the public. And so, I would support your, Mr. Bennett, your notion that this come, come back to the board and we not delegate the authority. That would be a step in, in the right direction. But, you know, the harbor is a public place and we have to think of the harbor as a place to serve all the classes of people and that includes the working class. If you look at the harbor today, even Channel Islands Marina, if you were to look at that before it changed, and maybe it's still true, you've got working-class people with boats in there. So, we, we have to watch where we're going with this harbor so we don't price everyone that's in the lower economic class, middle class, upper middle class, out of the harbor. So, that's, that's one of my major concerns. That's why I agree with the conversation about the, the length of the slips.
But, just point out, I, I think everybody agrees that we have to do, we do have to protect some of those people that are not going to be able to afford the bigger leases, which is why we said 25% of the leases. I mean, I think that's a, that's an overall policy that we came up with to try to, to express this, so I think we have expressed that. I think we're pretty close to ready for, ready for a vote. Supervisor Parks, I just want to make one comment. I hope he appreciates it in the spirit that I'm offering it. I want to thank Mr. Clankins for bringing this one item up about the existing lease. We wouldn't have this information. We haven't always agreed, but you've been very diligent about researching this kind of stuff and I'm, I'm better off as a decision-maker having this information rather than not having it, so my compliments. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I do want to hear from our county council whether now or later about whether our county's position should be that we can go out into the waterway and, or whether it's de minimis and it's not really considered going out into the waterway. Supervisor Flynn brought up an interesting analogy of the airport authority where they can't extend, for example, out into the runway, you know, some of those buildings and, and you don't. I wouldn't have a problem at all with the extra 20 feet, except that if there is a choke point that we're talking about, if there's a basis for that 20 feet, why you shouldn't be expanding out into the waterway, I want to know the implications. And that, I would imagine, is why you have this provision in our public works plan that you don't do it, because there is a, there's potential choke point. So, that, that is something that I would like to have information on. And I, I mentioned, I think, $2 million, I guess $4 million over the course of 40 years or something like that and I'm sure there's a lot more coming in that 40 years. And just bringing that up, if, if we have like a base rent amount, that, that should be proportionately increased by. I'm just looking out for the county if we should, even if it's only $10,000 or it's $4,000, that's still funds that shouldn't, not, we shouldn't be deprived of for expanding the amount of lease area. Also, I'd like to just point out that it, it isn't whether I trust staff or I don't trust staff. The question that I see here is, and the thing that is most important to me here, is what Supervisor Flynn pointed out, you know, it's, it's the middle-income people who have those boats that are in the smaller sizes and the most predominant, which is 28 to 32-foot boats. I just want to point out that right now, under 32-foot in our harbor, 78% of our slips are under, 32 feet or under, 78%. This change would make it that 24 or almost 25% that we're requiring it. So, that's a, that's a big difference, going from three-quarters to one-quarter are going to be these 32-foot and smaller. And at the other end of the spectrum where we don't have, where we have 10 boats, 14 boats over 44 feet, we'll have 158 boats slips over 44 feet. So, that, that's huge. We're making a definite redesign of this so that the predominant boaters out there will no longer be able to be there. And, and that's why I think it's so important that we don't just look at the economics of this, but also look at the, the middle-income individual who's out there right now and to assure that we are addressing the most popular need that's there right now because otherwise they'll be displaced. I would like to encourage Vintage to come back to us and, and see how they can help address that difference between 78% now to 24% was what will be left with, with this proposal for those that are 32 feet and under. And addressing it with 20-foot slips doesn't help the people that are now in the 28 and 32-foot. So, I'd like to have that brought back and I understand it's not on the agenda, so it's not something we can do now, but I think it's extremely related to what's before us. And so, what I, I would like to propose is that we bring, you know, if- And so, what I would like to propose is that we bring, you know, certainly if we can separate the motion, I also have no problem with the alcohol one, and I guess the revisions to the map that are necessary because of the survey, and I don't even know if that has to go to Coastal Commission, those two changes. But where we're going to start changing the design of the slips, such that it, as I see it, will displace the majority of boaters out there. I wanna have that revisited. I'd love to have Vintage come back and make those changes. And while the board may say, "I don't have this information before us, I can't make a decision on this," we certainly can get that information brought before us, because if you care, that 78 percent of them are now going down to 24 percent of all the, of what we have out there, and I do. I think it's worth looking at. So, I would propose, if it's appropriate, to move forward on the items relative to the survey map and the alcohol permit. But the issue regarding the 20-foot extension, I want an analysis of from our county council. And I would like, at that same time when that comes back, to have a revision that includes the middle-income folks that are out there now.
I have two questions. Number one, I don't know whether bifurcating the recommendations, what's gonna be the response, or why don't we get that first?
I can't speak for Mr. Dunn, he can nod or shake his head. I can't imagine that they would go ahead with the survey without knowing what the outer boundary of the parcel is. So, that part may not matter. We could go ahead and do, just remove the exemption for alcohol, and perhaps you'd like to limit it just to that.
Uh-huh, right. Okay, I'm inclined to say if they're not willing to go forward with the survey, that we probably should just, you know, we'll see where this goes in terms of support. But I do want to, I think fairly substantially disagree with the betrayal of Supervisor Parks when you say we're going from 78 percent to 24 percent under 32. If you just change that from 32 feet to 34 feet, we just have the data from them presented that 46 percent of the leases will be under 34 feet. And I don't think we're displacing the majority of the boaters if we're saying, all some of them are gonna have to do is rent something that's two feet longer. I mean, you know, statistics, you can work with a lot of different directions. But if we're keeping 46 percent of our slips for boats under 34 feet in length, I think we're making a substantial commitment to that smaller boat category. We're trying to design for, you know, you don't build, you don't build these things often, you do it every 30 years. So, I just, I mean, it's fine if we disagree on this, but I don't want it to be misconstrued that we're abandoning, you know, the middle-class boater if we also, at the same time, are saying 46 percent of our slips are gonna be under 34.
Supervisor Bennett, you know, we can throw around this, but you need the data. For example, 34 feet, if you wanna go to 34 feet and under, there will be 145 in the proposed plan, there are now 400.
There will be 184 in the proposed plan.
I'm seeing 145.
In the 26 to 34?
In the 34-foot and under, there will be 145. Right now, we have 400. So, I just, let's get this data out and bring it back. I think that would make a difference, you know, going from 400 right now in that category down to 145 slips. It's a huge change. It's substantial.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Michael.
Yeah, I'll jump in here. Not to revert to my former self, but, you know, we have spent an inordinate amount of time on this, and discussing something that we can't even really take action on today. So, I will not support the motion as stated. What I would support is for it to come back with a discussion, an absolute analysis of exactly what is being proposed, and why. What is the market, what is the average, and what is the impact on some boat owner who's gotta put a 32-foot boat in a 34-foot slip? I mean, we're talking about stuff right now with no information in front of us, no market analysis, no understanding, and a plan that was really meant to be illustrative at the very best. And so, for us to continue to waste this kind of discussion in time is just one more indication of how poorly we handle matters that come before this board that had to do with the harbor. So, I will not support the motion as stated. I would support a removing the, unfortunately misplaced restriction on the yacht club, and bringing back a full analysis without a direction to necessarily change the plans, but a thorough and thorough analysis, because I've got one board member saying one thing, and I've got another board member saying another thing, and I, quite frankly, am not gonna count the slips on an illustrative plan, which isn't even what we'd probably end up putting if it goes to the Coastal Commission. So, you know, I just think it's time to cease and desist with this until we have the proper information in front of us, and then we can have an intelligent discussion and make that decision. Is the impact of two more feet on a slip on a boat owner so onerous that we can't just go with the 34 feet, consider it 46, whatever the heck it is, and move on?
Can I amend the motion, then, to just take care of the alcohol issue with the yacht club, and we'll continue the other items for him, so we can get this more of a market analysis, tell us how many in each size slip that we're changing it to from today?
In the spirit of the holidays, I'll second that.
I'll second to the motion. I'm sorry, Mr. Flynn, that's gone. The only problem with this whole issue is that here we have all these programs on alcohol and drugs, and we're pushing alcohol.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any objection to the motion?
That will also include that 20-foot issue from county council, if we can get some, an opinion on that.
I think that would all come back as the analysis.
It's only dealing with the alcohol. So, we have a motion and a second on the alcohol portion of this discussion today. Motion carries. We're at item 28, approval of the Eighth Amendment to the Anticapped Marine Services.
Oh, I hope this one will be simpler. Mr. Fairchild is in the room, Michael Fairchild, who represents the lesssee on this matter. This is a lease that is very short at this point, set to expire on November 30th, 2006. It's already a lease extension from expiration. This particular lesssee approached us, they are having difficulty with the lift, which lifts boats out of the water and up into the boatyard, either onto a trailer or for work. The lift is going down and requiring extensive maintenance. And he has made an offer to the county to invest in acquiring a new lift, not a repaired lift, not a reconditioned lift, but a brand-new lift that he would commission, in exchange for a seven-year extension from today, not from, not from the existing lease end, but from, actually, from December 31st of this year. What that involves is the lesssee, because of the age of the leasehold, would also make parking lot improvements and signage improvements, with a minimum total on those two of $7,000. It's very likely to be more, because his parking lot bids, as I understand it, alone are coming in at over $10,000. The lesssee would enter into a seven-year equipment lease, purchase for a new travel lift, incurring an obligation. The lease would be extended for seven years to enable this lesssee to secure the terms on the agreement. The county retains the option, however, at any time after three years to terminate the lease with six months' notice and go out to bid, if the board should elect to do that. Just for clarification, the second to the last bullet item on page two, it says if the county terminates the lease, any new lesssee would be obligated to maintain the lease purchase on the travel lift. My guess is it would take them the remaining term on that to make their plans for changes to the boatyard, even if they didn't want to keep it. We, however, did word the lease amendment, and I wanna call this out for your attention, to say that at the county's election, either the county or the lesssee can be qualified to take over the lease. We did that to preserve the board's options, not that there's an intention for the county to take it, but at some point, if you should elect to, we wanted to make sure that all the options are there for the county's choice, to either let it run its seven-year term, force it onto a new lesssee, or take it over itself for some reason I can't imagine right now. But I wanted to point out the difference in that wording. There is no change to the leasehold, no change in any other way except to the term. There are no Public Works Plans applications for this particular lease.
Do we have any public speaker cards on this? We have no public speaker cards, or any questions for staff?
Move it, approve it.
Moved and seconded, is there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Item 29.
Are you gonna approve it?
Approval of budget adjustments to incorporate additional wildfire disaster grant training.
Move it, approve it. Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any objections? Thank you, staff, for your patience and waiting.
Thank you, you did such a wonderful job.
Item 30, receipt of information, manual review by board supervisors of council on funds containing developer fees.
Supervisor Bennett, you may recall, November 23, we presented this to your board for the first time. Today, we're asking you to complete the annual review of the information, and find that for the fees and the fee purposes identified in Attachment 1, there's reasonable relationship between the fees and the purpose, and find that the anticipated fund sources, amounts, and dates of receipt for funding to complete the development projects and the date of construction commencement are identified and designated as required by the code.
Okay.
Do we have any cards?
No cards.
Need the recommended findings and actions?
Moved and seconded, is there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 31, approval of seating of a new chair and appointing new vice chair of the Tobacco Settlement Evaluation Committee. Good morning.
Ms. McMatto, CEO's office. We're just here today to recommend approval of the sitting of Ms. Susan Poy as chair of the Tobacco Settlement Evaluation Allocation Oversight Advisory Committee, and Judith Lawson as vice chair of said committee.
Okay. It's moved, that's the step up.
Move it, approve it.
Moved and seconded, any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. We're at item 32, include a CERT and defibrillator's authorized expense for Oak Park. We do have a speaker for item 32, and Supervisor Parks, this is your item, you wanna speak to this?
I know Diane Starzak is here, she is with CERT in Oak Park, and is a very involved group, and someone, and a group that is dependent on, and is dependent by the sheriff and the fire department to assist in alerting residents when we do have emergencies. They have played a really good role out there. And this request is something that has been supported by the Oak Park MAC. They would like to be able to provide these funds for a defibrillator. And apparently, the CSA number four out there does not specifically include this under the fire department issues. Previously, it did qualify under the issue of sheriff, but the fire department now is taking, has taken under the CERT, under their umbrella. So, this is a minor change, and I would ask Diane to come and give us some of her suggestions on how this will benefit.
Good morning.
Good morning. Happy to be here.
Diane Starzak speaking, Public Comment.
I'm the coordinator of our disaster team in Oak Park. Our team is completely a volunteer group, and we are now eight years old. And CERT is a part of FEMA, it's all across the country, and people have become trained through the fire department, through a six-week training course, under search and rescue, survival skills in disaster situations. So, right now, we have a viable team of about 30 people on our roster. We work very closely with our local fire department, Station 36. We've received exceptional support from our whole fire department in maintaining our program. And we work very closely with our schools and our community, trying to increase our disaster preparedness level in Oak Park. Under Supervisor Shillo, we started receiving funds once a year from the county to help us develop a cache of disaster supplies. We have a bin behind a fire station on 36, and every year, we've been able to add to that disaster cache. And if you would like, I do have a spreadsheet here with our inventory, if you would like to look at that. I also brought some show-and-tell pictures of the inside of the bin, if you wanna see that. Basically, what we're asking is that we continue to receive these funds under the provisions that have already been established. Having some monies come in to maintain our supplies as things become expired, batteries need to be replaced, and radios, et cetera, and we increase. Right now, we are at a, as a team, we're small, so we're concentrating on being able to set up a first aid station behind our fire station in case of a disaster. And right now, we have enough first aid supplies to basically treat 100 victims in a 24-hour period of time. And we just need to basically maintain that and improve on it. Any questions at all? I could help. I'm looking for the chair.
You have one?
No, I'm sorry.
My question, Supervisor Parks, or whoever, I'll let Supervisor Parks sign first here before I ask. I'm just, I'm not quite sure I've been, I'm able to trace the revenue here for this. Where's it coming from? Who's it coming from? Is something getting cut?
The community service area number four in Oak Park is through property tax, and the funds had been taken out there, but under the auspices of public safety, and when CERT was under the sheriff's department. Now that it's under the fire district, we need to make this revision, so we can, you know, specifically call out CERT and allow for the defibrillator.
So, does this mean the funds come out of the fire department's budget?
No, it comes out of the community service area in Oak Park.
Who would receive these funds if they didn't go for this? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, they go for things like road improvements, it's Oak Park-related, funds go back towards, I think even landscaping back.
Okay, Christine.
The funds remain with the county service area. They're budgeted every year.
So, it's gonna be used one way in the county service area, or another way in the county service? This is just an allocation of them, then?
Right.
Okay, great. Supervisor Michael.
Just a couple, no, you're done, thank you very much. That was my question, because she said, she alluded to continued funding, and I was having trouble with... Oh, no, I'm okay with Supervisor Parks' explanation and the auditor controller.
How much money, how much money comes into that fund, and how much is this expenditure? I mean, is there enough money for this expenditure?
There is enough money for this expenditure, I don't have the details, off the top of my head is how much is available, but it's, and it really isn't a new expenditure, is what I think is the point that we're making, that this has been ongoing, and now it's just, because it's under a different umbrella with the fire district now, that we need to redefine it in our resolution on the CSA. So, it's not like we're all of a sudden adding an expense that hasn't been spent before.
Okay, so, we're just, this is basically administrative? The defibrillator is already there?
No, it's approving a resolution of, well, first, it's a two-step process. We have to do this resolution of intention, setting the date for hearing, to change the CSA number four to allow specifically for the CERT and the defibrillator. We would not have had to have done this if we had, if it had stayed under the public safety umbrella of the sheriff's department. So, this is the recommendation, and I'll just go ahead and move, that we approve the resolution of intention, setting a date for hearing on January 25th, to include a CERT program and a defibrillator program within CSA number four in Oak Park. And then, we will actually have that hearing, if you would like, I'm sure Mr. Williams also can bring forward more information, if you'd like.
That hearing will be here?
Yes, right here.
Great. When that hearing comes, can somebody just bring us the trace of the money? That's the only question.
That's a matter of fact. It will probably work out quite well, and the auditor controller has been gracious enough to come to Oak Park in January, and we'll actually be presenting information about the CSA and funds, and where they're coming from.
Well, just as a recommendation, you know, I think it's incumbent upon all of us when we bring something forward, that we have the fiscal discussion, and then none of this could have happened, because what I wanted to say originally was, I'm very much, obviously, in support of the AED program. You know, I brought it to the board a long time ago, and I think it's a great idea, but I had understood it more of just being an administrative change, that we always bring the fiscal in, and there could have been just an explicit explanation of, you know, the CSA funds are dedicated to, and this is the annual income, and this is what these things cost, like we always do, and I think that would have been a little less confusing for everybody, because I didn't wanna ask those questions, I just wanted to show support for the team, the CERT team, and for the fact that I think AEDs ought to be everywhere in public buildings. I still believe that, I always will. And that that's what the program really, I thought... And that that's what the program really, I thought, was all about, and not really a funding discussion. So when it comes back, we'll have that discussion, you know.
We can get more information about what is the CSA and what does the CSA do. I didn't put a fiscal, fiscal commentary on this, because it doesn't increase anything that.
Yeah, but we always put, I mean, we require every department to do that, so we're obligated as well.
Sometimes supervisor.
Well, I've made this comment before. We all should, and I always do.
Okay, well, I second the motion. I want to thank you for sitting through a long hearing about the harbor to be able to comment on this, so thank you for coming up for that. I second the motion. Is there any objections to the motion? Seeing no objection, the motion carries.
And I did just want to mention that Diane was just recently commended by the board. She had won an award, was the Claire Barton Award with the Red Cross for her activities on the cert team out in Oak Park, so congratulations in person.
Thank you. Okay, we're at item thirty-three, and that's ratification Santa Clara River Restoration Project Grant Application and Acceptance of Restoration Project Grant and Ratification of NOAA's GIS Integration Development Grant Application. The whole enchilada here.
Everything is stated on here.
Good morning. Chris Stevens, Planning Division. Yeah, we have a series of recommendations before you today, actually related to two grants. The first five recommendations are related to a grant from, related to the Santa Clara River Restoration Project. And this is a grant to take a look at some of the issues related to our subdivision requirements and how they may be inhibiting folks, particularly in the Santa Clara River area, from restoring the natural riverine habitat on their properties. And in discussions over the past years with private nonprofit entities that are into river restoration, they've indicated to us that this has been a big obstacle for them. That our minimum lot size requirements in particular have prevented farmers who would love to give them a piece of their property so it could be restored haven't been able to do so because of those limitations. So our staff put together a grant application. This is described here in your packet, and we recently notified that we were successful in receiving those grant funds. So the project is to, for staff, to do the research and analysis, to come up with mechanisms for the board's consideration to perhaps provide some relief to this, to this issue. And then, assuming the board makes, adopts any changes to those ordinances, to actually then put together a brochure, other informational material describing the new permit process and the new subdivision process to property owners and entities interested in restoration, so that they can then take it from there and go through the standard review processes. So the recommendations, one through five, as I mentioned, are related to accepting that grant. Also, while we were here, we thought we would also bring to the board's attention another grant. We called it our NOAA GIS Integration and Development Grant, and that is Recommendation Six. That is another grant that came to our attention late in the game, as they typically do. And we have actually submitted the application materials. This is kind of a post-submital ratification from the board. And this project is related to finding a way to make the biological information that we've collected, or for example, Cuyahoga's watershed is collected, and get it into a format so people can actually use it. It's kind of a novel idea in some circles, but we think it's a good opportunity for us through our webpage and other mechanisms to get the information out, not just, you know, the development community, but property owners, biologists, and make sure everyone's using that same information. So we think it's a real good opportunity to take that next leap with that information, and we're asking the board to ratify that application. And of course, if we're successful in receiving the grant, we'll be back to you with more details on how that will work out. But that pretty much concludes my remarks. I have staff here who knows a lot more about this than I, and either myself or them would be available to answer questions.
Do you have any questions for staff? We have no public speaker cards.
Move approval?
Moved and seconded. Any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. My compliments on some initiative on these things here. Some of these are very, very good. We're at item thirty-four, forensic science crime lab.
Crime lab.
You're in closer to watch, sure?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. I'm here representing the sheriff on our request before the board to appropriate seven hundred thousand dollars from the proceeds of the sale of our helicopters for the crime lab project. Since you had authorized the crime lab project, we have, we had experienced some shortfalls, mainly on the Phase One, the construction. There had been unanticipated needs that we failed to see during the design and engineering phases of the project, which had cost us substantial amounts of money. Fortunately, because largely of the excellent maintenance that we had provided our helicopters, we had realized much more money than what we had expected from the sale. In fact, a hundred percent more than what we had expected before. The total proceeds from that is about seven hundred fifty-six thousand and some change. And we are proposing and requesting that your board allow us to use seven hundred thousand dollars from the sale of our helicopters, so that we can complete the crime lab remodel project.
My question for you, we've sold two helicopters, so how many helicopters do we have now?
We have three. The third that we had disposed of, we did not sell, because it was no longer ill-worthy. We just.
So we had six. We sold two. One was just scrapped for the most part.
We salvaged some of the parts that we could use, especially some avionics parts and some other parts that we needed to have.
Do we have any other questions for staff?
No questions. Good job on your sale, let me tell you. Aircraft are not easy to sell these days, and especially at a good price. I would move approval?
Moved and seconded. Any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you very much.
How much pocket change is left?
About fifty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars.
I'm just teasing you. You said seven hundred thousand and change, and I just was curious how much pocket change was left.
And now, we're on item thirty-five. Are you going to handle that also for sure?
No, sir.
No. Okay.
I would like to just comment that this is a good example of cooperation between the sheriff's office, our office, and your board of taking monies that were invested in public safety and because of the conversion of assets with the reduction of the number of helicopters and putting it back into public safety.
Thank you. All right, item thirty-five.
Good morning.
Good morning. Dennis Carpenter from the sheriff's department. Essentially, what we need is a contract with LA County to be able to continue to trade inmates back and forth. The county-to-county exchange of inmates occurs twice weekly, where LA County comes here and once weekly when we go down there. This contract essentially is for them to be able to haul inmates throughout the state. We don't use Los Angeles County for that. We use other counties, or we do it ourselves. But we, it's sort of a boilerplate contract, and we need approval on this in order to continue the free exchange that occurs each week.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Seeing none, we're ready for motion.
I would move approval. I just think that's a strange way of stating, so we can exchange prisoners. I clearly understand what it is.
Moved and seconded. Any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Item thirty-six.
Dante Onorico again for the sheriff. This is merely a request for the board to reauthorize the use of grant money, mainly because we were not able to spend all of them within the years that they were authorized for by your board. Through the efforts largely of Congressman Gallagher, we have had a series of this technology money made available to us by the federal government, and we weren't able to, because of the lengthy process in some of our IT projects, we weren't able to use all of the money. So we are requesting your board to reauthorize the use of those grants for such purposes, so that we could use that money within the fiscal year.
Move approval?
Moved. And seconded. Any objections? Seeing none, motion carries.
Could I ask a question?
Supervisor Parks.
How is the cops money going to be distributed?
This, the cops money on this specific request was distributed mainly to take care of our IT or in technology projects. And a lot of that, the majority of that.
So technology?
Yes, it is a component of the Ventura County information, justice information system.
And when I think of cops and the community-oriented policing programs, I think of cops on the street, but that's not the case in this particular instance.
That was, that wasn't allowed expense under the cops, because the expense on technology would make a save on manpower that ordinarily deputies would have to go back to the station to write the reports.
So the concept is it allows them to be out more, out in the patrol, instead of having to come to the station?
Do the paperwork, and that is what we had designed the field reporting system to be. So even as they write the reports, they are still out in the field.
Great. Maybe we can apply for some of those funds for transporting in-county prisoners to the jail and booking facility?
Unfortunately, that's not one of the allowed.
Apply for one of those grants, would you?
Sure, and we're always looking for grants that's still.
Move, or we already had a move?
We already, and we actually already said the motion carried, so we are now ready to, we're done with all of our open session items. We just have our closed session that we're back.
Oh, that's right. We did the motion on the, I didn't, sorry.
No, oh, that's right, we did the motion on the, I didn't, sorry.
Okay, board's back in session for an announcement, county council.
In the case of Patrick Rooney et al. versus County of Ventura, United States District Court for the Central District of California, case number LACV 03-7526JFW. The board has approved the settlement of the plaintiff's claims for the payment of the sum of $1.43 million. As a condition of the settlement, the county will receive the Rooney property to clean up. Thank you. Thank you. And we'll go to hear these things that... We'll go back into closed session.